The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of Mosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16 and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Maytee, that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. With that, I would ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection. At this juncture, I'll ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Counselor Ochowski.
Thank you very much. This is my first conflict of interest in five years. Unfortunately, it's not a pecuniary one. There's an item on the agenda tonight about the speed limit on my street. It's a petition. I did reach out to our integrity commissioner for an opinion but did not receive a response. So I'm going to err on the side of safety and I'm going to remove myself from the conversation about the speed limit, the petition, and any motions that could occur. I haven't declared it with the clerk, but I will do so as soon as possible.
Thank you, council. With that, I have a motion arising for the audience. We have had two meetings prior to this this evening, one with the Midland Bay Landing Development Corporation, and subsequent to that, a closed session to deal with a confidential matter. And this motion arises from that closed session to give staff instruction. I need a mover, please, Counselor Main and Counselor Ochowski. Motion reads that further to the verbal update provided by the Director of Human Resources, Health, and Safety at the closed meeting session held September 16th, 2020, respecting labor relations and contract negotiations. Counsel hearing confirms its direction to administration on how to proceed respecting contract negotiations. Comments or questions from counsel? Seeing none, all in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you. And I'll have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by Counselor McGinn, that the contents of the regular council with closed session agenda for September 16th, 2020 be approved as amended. Do we have particular amendments, Madam Clerk?
There were just a couple. Well, actually, just withdrawing up the matter with respect to the council composition. But additionally, the petition provided by with respect to Lakewood, there was an additional item that was added to the agenda as an attachment. So I just wanted to draw that to counsel's attention.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So counsel, you've heard the motion on favor. Thank you. That also carries unanimously.
For your worship, did I send a request in to have one item pulled?
Yes, and it's in the next motion.
Okay, very good. Sorry about that. I didn't hear it.
Yeah, thank you. So I now have a motion moved by Counselor McGinn, seconded by Counselor Downer, that the items and related recommendations contained within the September 16th, 2020 consent agendas, consent items having been considered by council, adopted with the exception of item 10.4.3, CL-2020-13, composition of council for the 2022 municipal election deferred from June 17th, 2020 regular council, which will be considered under Section 15, reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda for council's consideration. Counsel, you've heard the recommendation. Costa Cunningham.
This is the point at which we speak to the items on the consent agenda, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you so much, especially as everybody wore their costumes to speak to the item on the consent agenda of which I would like to mention. So you'll see we have a council information package. Any information that is sent addressed to mayor and council arrives in that council information package, including a letter from our Economic Development Corporation of North Simcoe announcing the I Love My Local.ca, I Love My Local campaign. This is a North Simcoe-wide shop local campaign. Support your local stores and organizations. It has a multi-prong effect that we're looking for. First of all, there is a directory that is being created at ILoveMyLocal.ca in which you can go in, find your local business, and see how they are open during COVID because a lot of them are at reduced hours and that can be very frustrating. You are a local business, get in there and submit your business there. Because the second prong of that is we would like to be able to share with our business community things that are happening, opportunities that arise, funding opportunities and grants and trainings that are arising. We have not had a mailing list with which to do this in the past. So when you go into ILoveMyLocal.ca, hit Submit My Business in there so that you can get up to the minute response information about what is happening locally from that governmental standpoint, from the Economic Development Corporation standpoint. And as a consumer, pop in there to enter for a chance to win some pretty great prizes. The entire list of prizes is on the website at ILoveMyLocal.ca. The Chamber of Commerce is cooperating with us on it. So if you want to pick up a frame for your license plate, or even just for while you're on Zoom, I'm thinking this is quite a handy dandy little idea. Or if you're a store and would like to pick up a deckle like I have here, or as behind Counselor McGinn, you may grab that there and also find out more about the campaign itself. Enter online, prizes are being drawn once a week, they're being announced on the Doc Facebook page in addition to all of our social, and you'll be contacted when or if you win. And of course, go onto social and use the hashtag ILoveMyLocal, and then leave a space and tell us what you love. So I went on and shared that I love my local flower shop. Fresh by the end downtown is always there, construction or non-construction to serve our needs for flowers. And I popped in to grab my daughter some housewarming flowers last week. So that's the kind of thing we're looking for, let people know what's open, what you're enjoying, what you're doing. And I think that's about it from the CIP. If you read the CIP, you'll find even more on that and go to the website to start participating.
Thank you, Counselor Costa-Gordon.
Thanks. I'd also like to call something out that isn't pulled. It looks like it's just going to get passed, and that's the Homelessness Action Committee. That was the name that we came up with in terms of reference. And this is a council-led committee. I guess you could call it a hack. It's a hack committee. We're going to try not to do a hack job, though. And very proud that council supported this and supporting the terms of reference. And it's wonderful that myself and Counselor McGinn and Counselor Proster are on this thing. I have high hopes, tempered with reality on what we can do jurisdiction-wise and reality-wise. We're not going to be curing cancer, unfortunately. Well, you know, never know, we might stumble across it, but COVID, I guess, would be the more important one right now. But we are going to take a look at some deep societal issues and many wonderful services that are in town, how, look for any gaps, basically look for a gap analysis. And we're going to be turning to four members, which is a little higher count than we'd originally anticipated, of the public to join us on this adventure. And the advertisements for those volunteers should, you know, hit the channels, however that happens, soon enough. And I encourage anyone that has a passion about this, that would like to have a seat at the table and help us really make a difference in Midland, for Midland's homeless folks, both now and sadly in the future, step forward, put your name in. You don't have to have an abundance of qualifications, or the skills matrix is not prohibitive, nor is it requiring you to be a resident of Midland. So please have a look at the terms of references, their advertised. If you have an interest in this, I know many people have talked to me over the past few weeks about this, please apply. The longer we take to try and, you know, fill this committee, the harder it is to hit the ground running. So really happy that it's on here and really looking forward to, you know, doing something, you know, which is far better than doing nothing. And your council is committed to this. So this is wonderful news.
Thank you, counselor, and good luck with that other pursuit with the cancer. I wish you very well on both. Who else did I see? Was it Counselor Main?
Thank you, worship. Just tying into that, there was a letter announcing the new manager of the Guest House Shelter. So we want to welcome Nathan Sykes to the position, and we want to send a big thank you to Steve L.J., who did a wonderful job with basically the opening of the facility. And so thanks, Stephen, for all his hard work, and we wish Nathan all the best.
Here, here. Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments before I call a question? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. I now have a motion moved by Counselor Main, seconded by Counselor Cunningham. The council resolve into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? And thank you again, that counsel, counsel that carries. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Welcome, everyone. First on the agenda is presentations, although we have none, but we do have a petition and a deputation tonight. Petition is from Lakewood Drive. Sorry, Counselor Ochowski, I understand you have a conflict, so please note that Counselor Ochowski has not involved this conversation. A petition signed by approximately 70 residents requesting that the speed limit on Lakewood Drive be reduced. And there's a, is there anything that could be provided from staff, maybe Mr. Elliott on this petition? Madam Clerk?
I don't really have anything to add, other than there were a number of attachments there that sort of highlighted.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Gordon.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to actually drive on Lakewood Drive for the first time in my life. I never visited there with the police. I never had reason to go onto Lakewood Drive for any reason personal otherwise. And I got to get my feet wet and have a look at the community in question. I've read the comments, I've read the petition, which, you know, basically has virtually everybody on that street's signatures on it. I've talked to the petitioner. I've talked to a resident on that street, aside from the petitioner. And it is very clear to me that the community wants this. It's a very simple ask, really. It's a, you know, there's a bylaw in fault, and I think there may be some notice time we have to give, can't just like presto change the sign. Or maybe you can, I just think, I don't think you can. But I wanted to really find out from them what the core expectation was of a speed reduction. Right now, there is no speed sign. It's the implied 50 that is everywhere in the community when there is no speed sign. And I, you know, with my background, I really wanted to temper this ask with, you know, so we put up a 40 sign, and the same people that don't, you know, follow the implied 50 rule, just keep on driving faster than they should and ignore the 40 sign. And the only real solution to, you know, people that are driving dangerously on a street is enforcement. There's education, of course, but part of that is enforcement and education. So that, I think, plays a part in this. And the proponent here was very open and receptive to that. They weren't expecting miracles from the application of this sign and the reduction of the speed, only that it would send a message, a clear message, because there's no sign there right now, that the speed is reduced on that road, and there's a reason for it because of its narrowness and the people that live on it walk on it. And there's really no place to even dive to safety if someone's come and barreled them down the road. And the ask to me seems reasonable. They are, this is not an expensive ask. It's the cost of a sign and whatever it costs for the, you know, the overhead of putting the bylaw together and making the changes we have to do for the Highway Traffic Act, notifying the public of the change. But this is a change that's for a one street. They're not suggesting this be, you know, done all over town. They're not suggesting, this isn't a small subset of people with an axe to grind. This is basically the entire street. So my position on this is pretty simple. I'd like to see a motion come out of this that grants them the ability, or the town grants their wish and puts a speed reduction on their street of 40 kilometers an hour with the full eyes wide open that this isn't necessarily going to solve the problem, but it goes a long way. It's good, well, it's, and more importantly, it's what the majority of the residents on this tiny little dead-end street want from us. And I see absolutely no reason to deny them unless I learn something new here tonight. So unfortunately, the petitioner couldn't make it. He's got a darn good reason, a brand-new baby number two a couple days ago. He may be watching us right now. I suggested that if he needed a way to calm the infant and put it to sleep, you know, watch one of our council meetings sometimes. But I told him that he had an ally in me, this just makes sense. It isn't my word, you know, we're going to talk about words later, but that's irrelevant. These are residents of Midland with a concern, and for good reasons, Counselor Ochowski chose to step away from this conversation. So I very much wanted to be his voice, representing the people on his street, let alone his ward, or that ward, and throw my support behind this. I just can't see any good reason not to. So that's, those are my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Counselor Downer, then I have Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. What happened to enforcement in this town, anyway? I'm seeing homemade lines, lawn signs slow down, stuck in the lawns on Fourth Street. I'm seeing signs, like, do we not have a police force, and why aren't they enforcing the speed limits? This is, why are we changing speed limits? Why don't we, why don't we count on our local police to enforce these speed limits? Somebody answer that, or?
I will be happy to bring that up at our next Police Service Board meeting.
It seems, it seems to me, it seems to me, there's a problem, it seems to me, there's a problem when you have, when you're driving around town and you see slow down signs hanging from telephone posts and lawn signs. I think, I think it's getting out of control, and I'd really like to see the OPP step up their enforcement.
Thank you, Counselor Downer. Counselor Strathern, I mean, sir, Mayor Strathern, you want to go? And then I'll have Counselor Cunningham.
I just wanted to respond to that. I think the OPP are doing enforcement, and they're, the issue seems to be, and we're hearing this from the inspectors, that people are being more and more aggressive in terms of rolling stops, speeding. We've actually, through our radar device, clocked people at over 120 kilometers an hour on Fourth Street. People are just, they're just saying so much. And no matter the enforcement levels that are out there and the radar traps, but for sure, we brought this up at the last meeting. They were going to, they were looking at stepping up enforcement even further, and we'll raise it again with the OPP. Thank you.
Counselor Cunningham?
Yes, thank you. I think this is something we're going to hear a fair amount. So I want to thank Mr. Gerdzinski for bringing this petition forward. This is absolutely the way to get this looked at as a special item to approach. And I think we will see this in many parts of Ward Three where we do have those unposted signs and no sidewalks. This is an ongoing challenge that has been coming up since Ward Three got enveloped into the town of Midland without getting those sidewalks in place. There are various places in Ward Three where the concern is significant, and it, with no sidewalks to step off of, no place to walk dogs that are safe. I think this should also prompt us to look at this, as well as several of those roads along our Midland Bay Point, where residents are concerned about safety for themselves, their young children, as well as for their elderly people, because we have some people who are, you know, getting out, getting their exercise, but with people whipping around those corners and taking those short roads and still speeding down them, we see that all the way through this side of Ward Three. And I'd like to know how we accelerate the process. I know we've got some great master plans putting together, but accelerate the process to slow people down.
Oh, Counselor Cunningham, if I could, could I, I just, I know this is your ward, and I understand there, you know, the speed in all of town in Midland is a problem, but this is a dead-end street that has 70 residents. These are residents speeding in a residential. Has there been any type of communication with regards to just the neighbors themselves saying, hey, you're, you're driving a little too fast down that street? Because I can't see, you know, I see they're mentioning with regards to delivery, but how many deliveries could there actually be, and how many sightseers? But we heard Counselor Gordon say it's his first time he's ever been on the street. He's lived here for a long, long time. I've never, I drove down there for my first time when I saw this motion myself. I'm just curious, because to me, yes, in other areas, Fourth Street is a totally different. But this is actually resident, residents speeding in front of other residents, your neighbor's house. And, you know, if it was on another dead-end street, it probably could be relieved quite easy with, you know, I know in my dad's day, you would just go down and knock on the neighbor's door and say, hey, your boy's speeding by my house every day, come slow down. But I'm just curious if any of that conversation has happened.
That's a great question. Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor. One of the, so there's a couple of sides to this. And yes, indeed, these, though they're dead-end streets and though they are residents doing this, if you are out and somebody is gunning it to 50 or 60, which is well within the speed limit, and your child or your dog or your cat is wandering across this quiet residential road, you're not really breaking any laws, are you? Telling somebody to slow down when they're doing 60 in a 50, but gunning it between stop sign to stop sign is a challenge. If the speed limit were reduced to 40 or even 30, then enforcement could be a piece that we could bring in here. I know there's some challenges of not wanting to have neighbors who may be perhaps a little inconsiderate also angry at you. So is it really the role of somebody to have to enforce that themselves?
No, no, it's I, I just was curious on the question. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. Counselor Main, and then I'll have Counselor Strathern.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Well, luckily, we are starting to develop policies regarding traffic calming. We had a draft traffic calming policy that never was implemented, but did actually get reviewed as part of the multimodal transportation plan, which provided a lot of commentary on it. So we talked about education, that's obviously super important, enforcement, and the missing three E is the engineering piece. So the number one determinant of speed on a road is lane width. So obviously, this is a dead-end street, and they're looking for reducing the speed from 50 to 40. And I live on one of the few segments in town that actually has a 40 residential street. And there's even evidence from the, a report from the Ontario coroner suggesting to even lower that down to 30 for residential streets, just because the coroner's office has to deal with all these horrific traffic accidents of young children. And so I think 40 is a speed if our residential area is that, not only Lakewood, but we should probably roll out in other areas in town. And Mr. Gerdzinski did the right thing by getting a petition and show that this has broad local support. And our traffic calming policy actually even mentioned that. It said, you know, we want to support initiatives that the local community wants to see traffic calming. And so this is probably the right way to do it, to demonstrate the local need. And then how do you do it? Obviously, changing the speed is not necessarily going to change the behavior. And so that's why we need to continue to looking at simple, low-cost stuff. Paint is a very effective one. We've heard lots of commentary about the bollards on Bay Shore, how incredibly effective those are, maybe almost too effective. So those are the little low-cost things that we can implement. And I'm really hesitant towards speed bumps. I think that that's definitely the last traffic calming tool, as I've said before. So little sticks, paint, signage, a flyer for education for the residents, those are all the things that we'd want to do when we roll out a traffic calming policy across town. So in terms of this specific street, definitely support moving from 50 to 40, but I think we could probably package together about five or six streets in town to roll out a 40 pilot program. I think that that would, we've heard a lot of interest from other residents in town, and they've also shown petitions to demonstrate local support. So that's one way of how we can implement this in a fair and concise manner so that it's not just one street that gets preferential treatment. We do it here to demonstrate 40 is safe and it's a good speed for residential, and we roll that across town in other problem areas. So that's some comments of how we can do some traffic calming for Lakewood and other places. So thank you.
Counselor Main, great points. Mayor Strathern, then I have Counselor Downer and Counselor Gordon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to your point about people parked on the street and obstructions, I was out there today. I counted five significant obstructions on the street where I had to slow right down to make sure there was nobody behind. And typically, they're tradespeople working out there. It's the same, the same sort of problem you find on, for example, Aberdeen. We have tradespeople doing work on people's houses, and they've got their truck plus a great big trailer behind, and other gear and machinery moving around. That's a problem. The other thing that, living out there, I can tell you that a number of the people who are flagrantly violating the speed limits out there are in fact residents. Not all of them, but the same ones all the time. And I hate to think what they're actually clocking out there, and some of the kids are actually doing high-speed racing at 2:00 in the morning. You hear the tires and the rubber, and obviously, you're not going to have people out there. But the other thing that was mentioned in that petition was lighting on that particular street, or I think three street lights. And I don't know what's with the hydro utility out there, but they seem to be awfully slow at moving on requests to put light, appropriate lighting on, on the, on their particular poles out there. So, and I do happen to agree with Counselor Main that maybe it's time that we start looking at a pilot or up for speed around here, certain streets. I know, I know Counselor Gordon talked about a motion, so whether he's going to put one forward or just what's going to happen. I think we need to also, you know, have a serious conversation about sidewalks in Ward Three. We've touched on the subject several times, but it is one of those areas in town where there are really no places for people to walk safely. And you do get people just flying along some of these things, like Fuller, for example, is just terrible, the people on the east, sorry, the west side of Fuller, for trying to get out onto Fuller when traffic's coming out of Super Jail or, or Wake Point on shift changes, and just generally. So, but to your point about the, some of the residents speeding, for sure they are. But most residents I know out there are pretty, pretty good about what they're doing. It's just a few, and it's just catching them at the right time.
I think we're all in agreement, and it sounds like a great conversation. We'll look forward to a motion coming forward. Counselor Downer?
I just, I just want to be clear that I'm not against the petition. I'm not against lowering the speed limit.
I don't believe anybody is.
I just want to be clear on the, on the, you know, on the fact that I'd like to see more enforcement in this town. I rarely see the OPP with a speed trap anywhere.
And maybe.
I don't know. I'm not sure if Counselor Main knows this information, but maybe we could be the first town in Ontario to have a standard of 40 kilometers an hour in town. Might be something to consider. I always, let's lead, not follow. Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. Counselor Downer makes a good point. I mean, but the reality is we're just on five, you know, no more deserving of policing than zones one through four. So they, and this is a tiny little street, dead-end street. It's arguably, it's not one of the places even Midland Police used to hang out on, except by call, you know, it's got a call out there. So, but I agree, and I hear you, because you look around the town and it is kind of disturbing. It's good advertising, you know, kudos to the guy doing it. But seeing all these slow down signs, it sends the message to anybody coming into town that it's like the Wild West here, you know, people just drive crazy speeds everywhere. And you get folks taking things with their own hands, like on Cook Drive, where they, or it was a prank or not, but they put up a road closed sign on Cook, and were diverting traffic actually onto whatever they are, I can't remember the name of the street, but the one that all the houses are being built on around the side of it. So people are, you know, they're getting upset, and they're feeling a lack of speeding enforcement. Careful what you wish for, because I see them all camped at all the old spots we used to camp at, and they're, they're good places to write lots of tickets down by Johnson's Fruit Market and stuff, but, and then, but anyway, back to the residents speeding, yeah, that was something I asked about, because I was puzzled too, like, this is a tiny little street, almost everyone's names on this petition. You know, I mean, isn't it one of you guys that's actually, you know, speeding along the street? And, you know, the petitioner did admit that there's probably one or two folks that, you know, caused problems, and they, you know, they don't, they don't want to see the speed limit changed, they don't want to see enforcement because they're in a hurry to get what they need to go. But with people working at home because of COVID, the number of deliveries, like the little, you know, all the Amazon deliveries, I know they come to my place all the time, and they're not even marked vehicles, they're And they're not even marked vehicles. They're just private delivery services. There's a lot of impacted people working from home that's increasing traffic on these streets. And everyone's in a hurry to get the deliveries and done. And, and some people are not paying attention to the speed. So again, I'm not under any false pretense that slapping up a sign there and lowering the speed limit is going to magically fix this problem. And I articulated that very clearly and I don't believe that proponents of this believe that either, but it's, it's something. And it's doing something that sends a message. And, you know, it's, to me, it's such an inconsequential little thing and it's the entire community. For the, for the, you know, the lion's share of them that want this. And, you know, if other streets and other groups want to organize in Midland and come to council with a similar ask after hearing this, this inspires them, then, you know, bring it on. Let's deal with this. That'll go a long way to councillor May's study. We don't have to pay consultants then. We have our own community coming in and being our consultants, telling us where the hotspots are. So I'm, I'm very glad to see this little group organized. I agree. I think they make, went about it exactly the right way. And I'd like to reward that tonight by, and I, I put a motion and I emailed the clerk with it. But I'd like to reward that effort by granting them their, you know, their reduction and posting a sign and doing what we have to do. And see what happens. And it might even be worth slapping our little speed trailer up there at some point, just to run some measurements, get some metrics.
Thank you very much, everyone. Great, great conversation. I think we're all in agreement. We'll look forward to, I presume, a motion will be coming forward. If not, we can craft one. But thank you, everyone. We'll move on to our next item, which is a deputation. From short term rentals, Sumac Lane, Ms Larson to address council. Ms Larson, and welcome back councillor Chesky. Ms Larson, Ms Larson here tonight, Madam Clerk. Oh, I see your name up there right now. Thank you. Get her set up. Give us a second, everyone will. Ms Larson? Madam Clerk, is Ms Larson available? I see your names up there. Ms Larson? Not sure what's happening. Bear with us. Give us one second. We'll, we'll, we'll see if Ms Larson's available. Madam Clerk, is any luck with regards to Ms Larson joining our meeting this evening?
I'm not quite sure why there's a technical issue. She, she is showing as unmuted and.
I see her there. It just, okay.
Everything looks good here.
Should we give her a moment or Ms Larson, are you available?
I'll try to reach out to her by email quickly. I know she's been responding.
Okay. So wait, if we want to take a five minute break until we get Ms Larson back up, is that fine with council? We'll be back here at 7:40. We'll give five minutes. I'm going to run down and I'm at the office now and I'll run down to see what's happening with regards to, so we'll be back here in five minutes. Thank you.
Whatever you're eating there councillor Downer, sounds amazing. I'm going to have some.
Yeah, come on over, come on over.
I know where you live. I can't jog that fast.
Madam Clerk, were we able to get Ms Larson?
I'm just on, on the phone with her, so it's just.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So Deputy Mayor Ross, I have Susan Lawson on the phone, on speaker. You may have to turn your Rogers, if you have it on Rogers, turn it right down. Yes, your, yes.
Hello, Ms Larson? Madam Clerk, you're muted. The joys of technology. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Okay. Can you hear Susan, Deputy Mayor? She's going to speak now.
Hi, Ms Larson. How are you this evening?
I'm fine, thank you. It's Lawson, actually.
Lawson, I'm, I apologize. I'm very sorry. Thank you very much for joining us. We can, can everyone give me a thumbs up? They can hear fine? Wonderful. We can all hear you. I'll remind you that you have 10 minutes and please stick around. Maybe a few questions for you.
Okay, thank you. Can I just put it on my speaker?
Of course. We'll see how it works.
Okay, how's that? Are we okay?
It is wonderful. Thank you very much. It's all you. And I'll, I'll remind you, you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you Chair, Mayor and members of council. My name is Susan Lawson and I live at 1000 Sumac Lane. I'm representing the majority of property owners on our lane. I've had, I've not had an opportunity to visit with each resident, but I speak for all of the immediate and nearby neighbors of the property in question. For anyone who know, who does not know Sumac Lane, we are located on the south side of Little Lake, off of Highway 12, opposite the Midland PUC. There are 12 property owners, 11 single detached residences, one vacant property. Eight of which are full-time residences and three of which are seasonal residences. The reason for my attendance this evening is to, to discuss a serious problem that we are experiencing on our lane due to a short-term rental. The need to define short-term rental and to request that council adopt an interim control bylaw, site-specific for Sumac Lane for one year. That can be extended up to two years as we understand a study may need to be conducted for this unique area. As well, we are requesting that short-term rental, commercial accommodation and Airbnb within the town, within the town bylaws for residential neighborhoods. Be defined while describing slash identifying the close proximity of residential properties to these rental properties. Any loopholes for anyone subletting should also be addressed. In my review of the current Town of Midland zoning bylaw, under section five residential zones, we are R5 residential. Under the permitted uses, short-term residential, Airbnb, commercial accommodation rental is not included as a permitted use. I have lived on Sumac Lane for 26 years, along with a number of other residents who have been longtime residents and who have either purchased over recent years or have purchased or had the property transferred from their parents to themselves, keeping their cottages, now full-time residences within the family. It has always been a peaceful and quiet neighborhood. These are our concerns. A recent short-term rental business, which the owner has called Mary Jane's Place, started operating in our neighborhood at the beginning of May with a loud party of about 20 young people while phase one COVID restrictions were in place. Then we have witnessed that the homeowners are never at the property during the constant flow of renters at Mary Jane's Place. And there is no control or supervision of the number of people attending. This has now developed into a continuous occupancy cycle occurring two to three times weekly. There have been up to four families per stay at times, well, some people at any given time. Rentals occur for one night, two, three, four nights or a week. That impacts on Little Lake with respect to the number of people occupying a three bedroom, two bath designed for single family use. We are experiencing garbage left hidden in the forest, along our private road and in the lake, drifting onto our properties and yards and along the waterfront. We, property owners, are cleaning up after this. Renters also leave garbage at the highway days before pickup, which animals get into leaving us a mess to clean up. Renters also leave garbage in the shed at Mary Jane's Place where it sits for long periods of time, especially during the hot season. With no proper garbage disposal, there could be odors and potential rodents. Except the use of our private road with the numbers of vehicles at one residence, which leads to a dead end. Winter conditions on our lane is mainly single vehicle access. Emergency medical services would be impacted with this constant overflow of traffic. Noise issues. It's a private road which we residents maintain at our own expense. Renters speeding on our lane with no regard to oncoming vehicles. All children visit with their grandparents or families who are our permanent residents. It's a safety concern. Winter concerns. We have a slippery steep hill to deal with. People new to the area without proper winter tires or all-wheel drive do not know the problems with a narrow lane width and how to drive in these conditions. We have seen this as we also have vehicles driving in from seasons on Little Lake Presentation Center. All season and permanent residents contribute towards snow maintenance. Snowmobiles have no access or road, or, sorry, snowmobiles have no access. Our road is not a snowmobile path, again, leading to a dead end. Another noise concern. Other safety concerns. Renters not respecting fire bans and in one instance burning Creosote railroad ties. The smoke wafted through and into neighbors' windows, like the trench. Fire truck access. We have no hydrants. There is a fire pit next to a dry field. Our area is surrounded by forest. There is a fire barrel and picnic table open or often left on neighboring property, currently vacant, inviting renters to spread out while having a bonfire. This rental business brings in many strangers who can also pose a safety risk to our neighborhood. To summarize, our area is not conducive to this type of business. This is a commercial business operating without a license and with no municipal guidelines. Currently, there is one property owner who has started up this short-term rental business. And there is the potential of a second property owner who has recently purchased property on Sumac Lane, which they may also consider a potential short-term business. Short-term rental business. Again, the reason for our request for an interim control bylaw, site-specific to Sumac Lane, to avoid concerns as previously mentioned. Provided to me just today, actually, in the, in the Midland zoning bylaw, definition for a dwelling unit. Dwelling unit shall mean one or more habitable rooms that may be used as a single independent housekeeping unit or residence having cooking and sanitary facilities. This definition shall not include a motorhome or a travel trailer for any commercial accommodation. As this is a new situation incurred throughout a number of our local municipalities, Midland does not yet have a definition for short-term rentals. Airbnb, I don't think, or commercial accommodation. I have included information provided to me for the township of Hay, the town of Collingwood and the township of Oramadoni. Oramadoni recently passed an amendment to their zoning bylaw defining commercial accommodation. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please hold on. There may be a few questions or, or comments for you. Any questions or comment for the deputy? I'll start with councillor Chesky and then go to councillor Gordon.
Thank you very much for your time, Ms Lawson, and your presentation. Just a quick question. I know you've lived there for quite a while, but just curious. Why site-specific and why not across town? And what makes Sumac unique in comparison to Aberdeen or Lakewood Drive or the other small, quiet waterfront communities?
Ms Larson?
I'm not sure if there's any problems within the area. We have a problem here on our lane. There's only, like I said, a few residents. I have no problem with having it occur throughout the town of Midland, obviously. I don't know if the town has a lot of issue with the waterfront location for short-term rentals. However, for Little Lake, it is an issue. It is a, a unique area due to the private road, something the town doesn't deal with. We have no services here. It's all basically up to us. We have power. But I mean, you know, as far as sidewalks, the streetlights, the garbage pickup we take to the highway, you know, there's, it's a, it's a whole unique area. And we're just looking forward for our purpose, for our road. That's the best I can give you right now.
Thank you very much. Councillor Gordon, you have a question?
Yes, if I could actually just pass the talking stick over to councillor Downer. He's got decades of experience doing this. And then he may bring up something that I'm not even thinking about. So I'd love to hear his comments or questions before I, you know, give it a shot.
Councillor Downer?
Yes, thank you very much. Ms Lawson, I was over to visit you. I, I, I saw the problems that you have encountered. I agree. I agree with you 100%. I would like to see this site, site-specific for the whole town of Midland, not just your area. You have, you have brought some good points to our attention. I, I noticed that your neighbors were all on side with you and I, I would, I would support you in this pursuit. I think it's time that we, we take a look at an interim bylaw, much the same as Oramadoni did. And I will support you.
Thank you.
Councillor Gordon?
Thank you. I agree. I mean, part, one of, at our virtual AMO conference this, this year was, you know, one of the sponsors was Airbnb. And clearly they want to partner with municipalities without, no, and not be like shut out of municipalities. So it's, they're really willing to be fully engaged in these type of bylaws and these studies that happen for communities. And they're, they, some of the registration and restrictions that communities are looking at imposing because they want to be good, good tenants. They want to be good business operators. There's a lot of money at stake for them and their entire business model. So when they have problem operator, that, you know, impacts negatively on their brand and. And clearly it impacts negatively on the community around them too. So your point is well-taken. I think, uh, that much like the Lakewood, the Lakewood Drive ask is the, uh, this is a small, tiny little community, even smaller than the last one, that has a, come together and says, this is a problem we need the town to fix because you can't. And, uh, fair enough. We have, if we have the power and the ability to put something temporary on this that's, uh, you know, buys us a bit of time to look at the more holistic picture of how can we manage and regulate, or should we, uh, through the Town of Midland Short-Term Rentals and the impact they could have, for example, on our rental stock for other people? Uh, that's sort of the discussion that's going to take longer and meanwhile you languish with these problems in your community. So on the agenda tonight, I don't know if you saw it, but there's two motions coming up. One is about this site-specific request. And the other one is to, uh, start looking as a community at what we can do or what we should do to regulate, uh, the short-term rental or, you know, or the ghost hotel, you know, economy in our community, which, you know, COVID and post-COVID is, you know, it's something that's coming. So rather than being caught unawares, we're not, you're not as convinced as to re-vent the wheel. Other communities have done this. We can very easily have our staff, you know, almost probably rubber-stamp some of the things that have happened that are working well in our communities and implement them in our community with consultation, of course. So I appreciate, although I couldn't get out to see you, the pictures in your report, which is very well-written, by the way, are very compelling, and it made it very, very simple for me. Even if you couldn't make it tonight, I could still speak to this after reading, you know, all the carefully crafted verbiage you put in there and all the citing you did. Uh, so thank you for taking the effort to do that and getting it in our hands and then furthermore calling in. So I too, I'm, I planned, obviously, I kind of already done it. I'm going to speak in favor of both of these for you uh, because I think that's good for the town and it's good for your, your tiny little community there. Uh, so you have an ally in this for me. Um, it's just about implementing and doing it right. I'm, I'm not entirely, I don't really understand what this permitted-use site-specific, you know, tool is, and I'm sure maybe Council Remain probably could explain it to me, but, uh, I'm, we're going to hear about it, I'm sure. I just want to make sure that it's something that is not a blunt object instrument, that we're actually applying the right one to this problem and how, what does it do for enforcement, enforcement opportunities? And who does it, you know? So the, they're not really questions, more just comments, and thank you for your presentation, thank you.
Council Remain, something, uh, a question, sorry? And then I have Councilor Strathern and Councilor Chesky.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, well, I'm not a planner, so I won't speak to the interim control use bylaw, which is a unique planning tool. Um, but thank you so much for your deputation, and I wasn't able to make it out, but, uh, Council, Council Post, uh, was able to make it onsite and, and thank you for relaying the information by email and making the deputation. Um, so just a question, um, for you, Ms. Lawson, about, so I know that we're gonna talk about short-term rental accommodations uh, and figure out, you know, if the town needs to modernize our policies, which sounds like we do. Um, but when you had some incidents over the summertime, especially you were saying there was large gatherings in Stage 1, um, did you follow up with the, uh, police, uh, or the COVID hotline or even the bylaw department over some of the property standards issues like garbage collection, uh, and, you know, some of the other, uh, issues that you were having?
Nope, I did not. Um, at the, at the beginning, it was more of trying to, you know, stay good neighbors. Um, we do like our neighbors because there's no problem with them directly. Um, it's just been the, you know, the series of events. We have definitely spoken with them, uh, the neighbors, uh, the owners, the homeowners. We've spoken with them, we've given them our concerns, we've discussed it in great detail. A lot of texts went back and forth. Um, did we contact the police or do anything other than that? No, we did not. Um, and at the beginning in May, um, you know, it was, it was at an early time. However, I mean, it was, it just came on so quickly, didn't affect that many people. However, you know, I, 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 I don't want to complain about those things. Um, and maybe we should have, but honestly, um, I didn't think it was going to be a reoccurring problem. And it's been like that all summer.
Now, Ms. Lawson, if I could add on to Council Remain's question, there was a letter that was sent, I presume, from the homeowner. There was no date on it, so we don't know when and if, when it was sent. But since that letter, has anything changed or it's stayed the same?
No, it has stayed the same. Um, maybe not, um, not the larger crowd. That kind of settled down a bit because it's the end of summer. But right through the long weekend, I mean, we've had people just leave, you know, kind of tree meeting, command, you know? Oh yeah, it's been, it's been an ongoing thing right through.
Okay. And when was that letter sent? Was there a date?
Um, I'd have to check the date.
I was just curious. That's fine. Not that it adds anything to the conversation. I was just curious if, you know, the, the neighbor identified an issue and, uh, if he actually, or he or she did follow up and it did get better, but I'm hearing it didn't, so, um...
Somewhere between the end of July.
Okay. Thank you.
Middle of, at some time, it's early August, something like that. I really honestly can't remember, but...
No, that's fine. I think your response that it hadn't got better is, is enough for me. So I appreciate that. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Strathern, question, comment?
Uh, well, first, the letter would, from the neighborhood was dated, the one I have in front of me is July 28th. Um, I'm assuming subsequent to that, I have another letter in front of me from the operator of the business and the owner of the residence indicating, uh, that they understand the concerns, that they are moving, planning to move there in roughly three months, taking occupancy, and the nature of the operation at that point slightly to change, uh, with running some sort of a health and wellness seminars from there. Um, so I guess my question is, uh, have you followed on since to continue a dialogue? Because I, I can tell you, I live on a private road, just like you do. It has two serious hills on it, one being private driveway, the other being the road itself. Uh, we undertake to maintain it just like you do. Uh, we have a number of rentals on that street. And, uh, basically what we have found is that continuous and engaging dialogue with the people who run those properties has, uh, very fruitful uh, in terms of dealing with the issues. So, and I know from people on other private roads out my way, which is on, or three, similar situations occur, we don't have, they don't have the same steep hills and that sort of thing. But the key point and takeaway in this is, uh, that, well, from what I see from this individual's response, it's the only one I have in front of me and it's not got a date on it. They're willing to engage in dialogue to improve the situation and to, um, couple people's comments about interim control bylaws. That's basically the thermal nuclear option in planning. It's also known as the sledgehammer, and, uh, you want to be careful what you ask for when you implement them. So, uh, but I, I just, I guess my question to you is, have you continued to have dialogue? I don't know when this letter was written, but it suggests to me that they're, they're moving to change the situation entirely. Is that your understanding?
Early on, we thought that may have been the case, but no, that has not changed. Um, we have been basically deceived, um, saying that, oh, you know, we're not going to have, you know, no one's coming in, we only have a couple more, can't cancel them now. And yes, it didn't change. It went on and on and on. Um, so unfortunately, um, you know, there, there is continuous dialogue though. Um, I haven't said anything further because it's like, what am I going to do? I mean, there's nothing I can do, there's nothing that guides and ourselves or, you know, we can't call the town, there's no bylaw. So, I mean, yeah, the dialogue continues with the neighbors. Um, again, it's not, nothing's changed.
So I just would offer a suggestion to you. One of the things that happened on our road was that there was not, um, there was not a right of access across people's property needed. If that's true on your road, then that's something you can use and your neighbors can use. I, I just have something to look at. But then thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Council Chesky?
Uh, thank you very much. I'd like to just echo Council Remain's comments about the proper enforcement measures for the proper, um, issues and using the fire department where we can and using OPP where we can. And, um, it's an interesting one. I, I get it. I, I do think that our, um, temporary rental bylaws are outdated, and I do think that's something we definitely have to look at. In terms of making a site-specific one, I'm not sure that I'll be supporting that tonight. Um, but I certainly do, uh, understand your, um, situation. But if we had this from the other side, if the resident, you mentioned that there may be another rental unit coming in. If we had a resident coming to us saying, um, that they're moving to town and they've just purchased this new property and we had just placed this bylaw that completely handcuffs them from the use that they intended on purchasing the property for, that would put us in a pretty tough spot. And somebody might have just spent half a million dollars on a property to find out that they can't use it for the permitted use that they purchased it for. My question actually isn't for you, it's for staff. Is this a permitted use in this area currently?
Why don't we, uh, Council Chesky, if we could, I don't mean to stop you, but we're going to have two bylaws coming forward and we'll have staff engage at that time if that's good. While we have Ms. Lawson on the, on the phone, we'll keep her, the questions to her. And then if that's fine, you can ask that question again. Would that be all right? Fine, sir? Thank you. Council Gordon?
That's a good question. I would like to know the same thing. Um, Ms., Ms. Lawson, at any point, uh, you know, when these things were happening, did you, uh, make a complaint to our bylaw department? Uh, or, like, I guess my concern is our bylaw department doesn't work weekends. And I don't even know if OPP do our bylaws as part of our deal. That was usually extra, and honestly, I don't know. Maybe the mayor, deputy mayor would know. But I can tell you a bylaw call for OPP is, you know, way down the old priority list. Uh, so I'm just wondering if you tried to contact bylaw during the weekend? Because we've had some recurring issues this summer that really would lead me to believe we should have bylaw enforcement happening on the weekend, much like our neighbors do. Oh, they make, it's like they're the Nazis over there in tiny township. They hire people that just make tons of money for them with parking and everything, and we don't have any bylaw enforcement. So what I'm trying to understand here is, did you reach out to bylaw about these, you know, the noise issues and the garbage issues at any point? Or were you just trying to really keep the peace with your neighbor?
What I did do was I emailed Wes at the time in July, but I didn't realize he had retired. Um, I did, uh, send an email, um, requesting some information about bylaws and short-term rentals within other residential areas. Um, and Rob Elliott, um, eventually then was able to respond to me. Um, so I sent it to Angela, who's on vacation at the time, and then Rob set up. Um, he did check the information. There didn't appear to be anything that bylaw could do. So I was left hanging. I didn't know what else to do. Um, Rob then suggested I get in touch with our counselors and see how we can move forward with something through, uh, to the town.
All right, thank you. We'll talk about this more around the motions because if it is a nuclear option and, you know, to Deputy Mayor's point, we don't want to handcuff the potential buyer of this business. So I don't know if that vanishes or we have the power to lift it or someone's to buy this house for some other purpose. We'll, we'll yak about that when the motion comes up. I definitely want to see you helped somehow. I don't want you just to have to linger until we get around doing a study and eventually change things or not.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Gordon. Uh, Ms. Lawson, before we, oh, I see Council Post had a question. Council Post? You're still on mute. There you go. Thank you.
Um, thank you for your presentation, Mrs. Lawson. Um, I just want to say that I fully support you. I've been out there. Uh, I know, driving down that street, it was my first time. I don't know that I'd want to be not too friendly with my neighbors or get on their bad side, because when you get down there, there's like nowhere to go. It's very small, and I can understand maybe not reaching out to the police with noise because they're going to know who called. So there's other issues there too that I think that they might not seem like a big deal, but when you're living in that, at that moment, those are choices that we make. Um, anyway, I support putting something in place. Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question or comments? We'll, uh, we'll end this de- deputation and, uh, we do have two motions coming forward, so, uh, we'll have that discussion at a greater, uh, at a greater length at that time. Thank you very much, Ms. Lawson, for joining us this evening, and, uh, we appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too.
Next on the agenda would be pulled items. We had one item, and it is, uh, let me just pull that up. I apologize. It's, uh, CL 2020-13, Composition of Council for the 2020 Municipal Election. It's deferred from our June 17, 2020 meeting. The council, that staff report CL 2020-13, Composition of Council for the 2022 Municipal Election dated June 17, 2020 be received and that the ward system be eliminated and the composition of council in the Town of Midland be restructured for the 2022 Municipal Election to seven members as follows. Mayor elected at large, deputy mayor elected at large, five counselor positions elected at large. The council be directed to provide notice and to hold a public information session prior to passing of this bylaw. So tonight we are here to give direction to our clerk, after which point she will have a, host a public meeting and we will pass the bylaw after that public meeting.
Deputy Mayor? I just wanted to, um, let you know that I do have a PowerPoint presentation to provide an overview of the report if council wishes.
Council, we, I, I'm in favor. Everybody else is seeing heads shaking. That would be wonderful. Madam Clerk?
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to share my...
Madam Clerk, I just got a, a message that Rogers is not broadcasting this right now. I don't know if they're like, there's a, having a feed problem or something. This is, this is like a really, really big deal, what we're going to talk about right now, and I need to make sure that it's being recorded or something.
Okay, I do have them, um, here. Let me just see if there's... Okay, just, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to put us back on mute for a minute. I'm going to contact, um, Rod, and I'll be back shortly.
Okay, awesome. And if they're having any technical problem, we can just, you know, record it and stick it in YouTube later or something.
Somebody just told me it's on now.
I just got same text that's on.
Yeah, yeah, me too. Must be all in the same calling tree here.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, I think we're all right. If you want to go ahead and do that presentation, it looks like we're on Rogers's, is...
Okay, thank you. And I just did speak with, um, with Rogers and May. We're having a bit of technical difficulty, so that's what the, why all of a sudden there was no, uh, it wasn't televised.
Report's all yours, Madam Clerk.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the report, sorry, can you hear me okay? Okay, so the report is on, um, council composition for the 2022 municipal election. So, whoops. Okay, so just as a bit of background before I, I begin, while the title of the presentation is Composition of Council for the 2020 Municipal Election, you will see, um, as I proceed through the slides, hold on here, um, that changes to council size impact the ward boundaries, so it, they go hand-in-hand. Uh, the town, as, so there was, the last ward boundary adjustment was in 1994. Um, council identified the, uh, review of the ward boundaries and current council composition was, um, one of their key strategic priorities for the 2018 and 2022 municipal election. Sorry. So Section 217 of the Municipal Act gives municipalities the authority to determine the composition, um, of council subject to the following. So there must be five, a five-member minimum, one who must be the head of council. Uh, members shall be elected in accordance with the Municipal Elections Act. The head of council is elected by general vote, and members other than the mayor, um, are elected by general vote or wards or combination of general vote and wards. And within our municipality, as you know, both the mayor and the deputy mayor are elected by general vote, and all remaining members are elected by ward. Um, and there is no appeal mechanism within the municipal act for objections to a bylaw altering the count, composition of council. So back in 2017, the town enlisted WSC as consulting to undertake a service delivery review for the purpose of providing an, an objective view of services and explore opportunities for alternatives and make recommendations for improvements. And upon conclusion of the review, a number of opportunities were identified which the, which the municipality could explore to improve services and reduce... which the municipality could explore to improve services and reduce costs. These included a review of the current ward boundaries and council composition. It's important to note that a reduction in the size of council was also identified by KPMG in a study undertaken in 2014 as a cost savings opportunity, and council at the time did not support this recommendation. So also, to note that to facilitate a review of the ward boundaries, council applied for funding under the municipal modernization program to engage a consultant to undertake the review, and unfortunately, we were not accepted, we were not successful in our bid. And the quote that is posted, that is an extract from the report provided by WSC Consulting, SCS Consulting, as part of their report for the results of their the review of our service delivery. So this chart was also prepared by WSCS Consulting, and it depicts the number of electors per council member for municipalities within similar populations to Midland, and Midland ranks higher, as you can see, than its comparators with respect to the number of council members per 1,000 residents. So it is above the middle there, so. And additionally, this is a comparison of the North Simple municipalities based on the number of council members and election method. So as you can see, Midland has currently nine members of council, and the others have seven, seven, and five. And total electoral population is 13,000 for Midland, 7,000 around Penetang, Wasey, 9,200 for Tay, and tiny township has the most, the greatest number of electors, which is 18,000. And two of the municipalities are using at-large elections, and Penetang is one of those municipalities that just recently dissolved its wards and will be using an at-large election process for the 2022 election. And I just wanted to note that although municipalities are not legislated under the municipal to hold a public consultation, a public meeting regarding ward boundaries could also include the solicitation of comments from the public on the proposal to reduce the size of council, should council wish to do so. So ward boundary reviews are primarily undertaken to achieve effective representation, as established by the Supreme Court of Canada. And achieving effective representation means considering, consideration must be given to voter parity. And as a rule of thumb, all votes should have equal weight, which means the number of people living in each voting area should be similar. And that being said, there are other factors used by the courts and the Ontario Municipal Board to define effective representation, and these are listed as wards should also, so the items that are listed there are some of the other additional considerations to be taken when considering a ward boundary review. So in 2018, these are the statistics from our 2018 municipal election. So as you can see, existing ward boundaries are, although not equal in population, are reasonably balanced. And the mayor and deputy mayor is noted are elected at large. A reduction in the size of council from nine members to seven or five would result in a need for ward boundary, for ward boundary adjustments to ensure fair and equitable representation. If council was to opt for a reduction in the size of council while maintaining the ward system, a ward boundary review, again, would be required. And this would, in this case, we would want to engage a consultant to conduct research, develop, and execute a work plan that includes broad public consultation, and the anticipated cost is $55,000. And as there is relatively a small pool of external experts available for such work, the response to an RFP process could be affected by any other ward boundary reviews that may be conducted by different municipalities during the 2018-2022 term of council. So the next slide basically highlights the advantage of an at-large electoral structure. So I won't go through all of them. I'm hoping everybody had an opportunity to review the advantages and disadvantages. But, great, like, so, greater choice of flexibility for each voter. They all have the opportunity to vote for all members of council, rather than just those council members in their ward. The system promotes a concept of a wide, townwide focus, with councillors being elected by, and concern for the town as a whole, rather than placing priority on more singular interests. Likelihood of affirmations is reduced. There are cost savings related to this type of electoral structure. In terms of the traditional method that we use now, traditional voting with polls and paper, this is really a large undertaking, and it's very resource, it's a very resource-rich method. So there would be cost savings realized if council was to opt for an at-large electoral system. And so candidates' disadvantages, disadvantages, candidates must campaign across the entire municipality, which could make the cost of the campaign prohibitive. That being said, with today's technology, there may be some additional opportunities. And no designated voices for particular communities or localities. At-large elections can lead to significant communities of interest and points of view being represented. As I said, I'm not going to go through them all, but that is, those are some of the advantages and disadvantages. So under the, whoops, sorry, under Section 2022 of the Municipal Election Act, municipalities have the authority to divide or re-divide the municipality into wards or to dissolve the existing wards. So this is just violating the process here. So if council was to go with an at-large election, and council composition of seven or five, then, and dissolve the wards, then a ward boundary review would not be required. This could just be undertaken by way of a bylaw. If council chooses to reduce the number of council members or adjust the ward boundaries, then a ward boundary review would be required. And it would be required regardless of whether the wards were to remain if council composition was to be reduced. And so current, so if council, these charts depict the cost savings that could be realized if the council complement was reduced to seven members. So there are a couple options. So there could be a deputy mayor and councillor eliminated. Those two positions could be eliminated for cost savings of approximately $70,000. Or there could be two council members' position eliminated, and that would result in savings of an estimated $54,000. If council was to proceed even further and reduce the members and have a council complement of five members, then, again, if the deputy mayor's position was eliminated, as well as three members of council, this would result in total savings of $138,000 approximately. And if it was four council members' positions that were eliminated, cost savings of $108,000 approximately. So electoral process cost savings over, summary, so a reduction in council size can result in a reduction of 54,000, or savings of 54,000 to 138,000, in that range. The electoral process savings with respect to an at-large election would be approximately 7,000. And that would be realized through the deduction in time devoted to election preparation, printing of ballots, staffing requirements for the advanced votes and election day staff, and the time dedicated, time that staff dedicates to ballot development, review, and preparation. And so the conclusion and recommendation is that the ward system be eliminated, and the composition of council in the town of Midland be restructured for the 2022 municipal election to seven members as follows: the mayor elected at large, the deputy mayor elected at large, five councillor positions elected at large, and that the clerk be directed to provide notice and hold a public meeting prior to the passing of the bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Wonderful. Greatly appreciated. I need a mover and a seconder to get this on the floor for discussion. I see Councilor Chesky and Councilor Cunningham. Moved by Councilor Chesky, second by Councilor Cunningham. Sorry. And if it is all right with this committee, I would suggest that we separate this, and we have the conversation with regards to at-large first. And as we say, we're going to be giving a recommendation at the end of this. And secondly, we'll move on from at-large to the composite of the council itself. Are we fine with that, the mover and seconder? I see nods have hit. Councilor Cunningham? Yes, so let's discuss at-large first, and then we'll move on to composite. Any questions? Councilor Gordon?
Thank you very much. For those of you who remember me banging on your door, or at even our strategic plan session, you know, you saw me put the sticker up for these two items, something we need to explore at this council term. And apparently it resonated, and it made it on to, here it is. First off, I want to apologize to the people of the town of Midland, because I had this deferred months ago, naively assuming that the deferral would mean there was going to be some consultation between that time and tonight, when it's coming back to us. And that is not the way it works. So really, I induced delay for the sake of delay, and that is so not like me. So anyway, I'm sorry that, you know, we didn't talk about this earlier, and things could have moved along sooner. The delay was unintentional, but here we are. I made it very clear that I wanted to see this discussed, this term, and here it is. I went out to do my own public consultations, because, you know, the way it's going to work now is after the votes tonight, meetings will be held. Your opportunity to potentially sway us in a different direction than what we decide tonight is going to be that one single opportunity at the public consultation, I assume. And then after that, we vote, like, to finalize it. So tonight, I'll tell you straight up right now, I'm going to be supporting the staff recommendations. There's some really good compelling arguments why it shouldn't happen. And a lot of those became very evident in the results of the Survey Monkey that I ran for all these months. However, the end result is, is on the graph, and I shared this with council last time. There's been more results, but it hasn't changed. 64% of my respondents, and there's about 300 of them, are in favor of reducing council size, you know, the way this recommendation is. And 59% are in favor of actually eliminating the deputy mayor position, which isn't part of the recommendation from the town, but I asked that because it was one of the options. So there seems to be an appetite for, you know, reducing some of the overhead and just having a head of council and councillors. So that may be something we could consider. This isn't a stab at the deputy mayor. This is just a position that he happens to hold. However, given the fact that county council right now has mayors and deputy mayors sitting there, and based on what I just, you know, was updated on recently, there is no desire to reshape county council, or at least no consensus, anyway. That doesn't seem like it's going to change anytime soon, so we may be kind of eukering ourselves if we eliminate a deputy mayor position and then lose a seat at county, unless they let us send an alternative in his place. And this is a question for the mayor. He probably knows better. But the bottom line here is that the people support the elimination of the ward system, at least the ones that took my survey, and they support their reduction of council size. And I'm hoping that they understand that there's an impact to their democracy, their voices and representation by doing this. It does allow for special interest groups, or pockets of wealthy areas, or really voting areas in the community to really seize control of council. That's a very real, very real reality. That's harder to pull off with the ward system, and harder to pull off with more councillors, because you get all these weird voices around the table, like mine, and other people, you know, who may come in to be a bit more of a disruptor. And not everyone's in lockstep with every conversation, which I think is healthy, good for democracy, but suffice to say, like, I would be a complete traitor to the people who I, you know, promised to bring their voices to council if I went out and surveyed them, and then just because it didn't align with my personal opinions, I voted against the results that I got from asking the question. So without getting, you know, I may talk again, depending what other inputs put in. Bottom line is I'll be supporting both of these, because that's what the community that I surveyed wants me to do for them, and I'm their instrument on council, so that's it.
Thank you, Councilor Gordon. Councilor Chesky, then I have Councilor Cunningham. Any others? Councilor Maine? And Mayor Strather. Councilor Chesky?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm in a unique position, being a Ward Two councillor, living in Ward Three, which is great. I have a great councillor in here. I get to call with my concerns, so it's kind of a unique position. It's great. If the system was geared that council meetings, only Ward One councillors voted on Ward One issues, it would make sense to have a ward system, and you vote in the people that you want to vote on the issues for your area, but it doesn't work like that at all. We all get voted in, and we all vote on all the issues across the town. I've never turned down a call from somebody who doesn't live in my ward. So I think elimination of the ward system is great, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chesky. Councilor Cunningham?
I'm going to speak for the elimination of the ward system as well. When I was out canvassing, I found many people who wanted to know why they got to vote for only the mayor, the deputy mayor, in one position. They really wanted to be more engaged with the entire process. That said, I'd also like us to have staff considering ways that we can help people that may not have the means to canvas the entire town, to have some way of sharing their information a little bit more prominently in the upcoming election, should we manage to eliminate the ward system. I think all voices need a chance to run for election, and I think we can mitigate some of the concerns about that if we can create some opportunities using technology, using our engaging Midland site and so on, to give a real voice and presence to all candidates.
Thank you, Councilor Cunningham. Councilor Maine, then I have Mayor Strather and then Councilor McGinn.
Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I certainly agree with the analysis about moving away from the ward system to the at-large system. It really makes the most sense, because the ward, as mentioned, Ward Three and Ward One, One, Two, that's a weird stacked ward system. So just moving away from at-large is really going to benefit everybody in town, I think, being able to vote for the cross-section candidates. So that, I think, is very, sounds like it's a very easy one. I think people support that. But I would then now speak in favor of keeping council at nine. I know we're going to talk about that in a minute, but I just wanted to make the points clear, because I just think it is so important, because we have a participatory democracy. And again, we have a wide selection of people that are on council. And so the big fear is going forward, what would that have looked like going backwards? And so just for example, say we drop two councillors, and say it was for Ward One and Ward Two. That means this term, we wouldn't have councillor Prost, councillor McGinn. I'd hate that. Last term, we wouldn't have councillor Jack Cotton or former mayor George McDonald. And what difference that would have made. And going back, you could see the different councillors that would be missing. And so councillor Atwood and councillor Charlebaud from the 2010 election. So going back and seeing how that would look like, I wouldn't want to change that going forward. So that's one of the biggest compelling arguments for keeping the nine, is it's, we have a wide range, male, female, young, old, different professions, different ethnicities, diversity, and that's what we really want to promote, is more people to get involved, because it's not just, we're not just policymakers. And I know everyone loves to hate on public policy, you know, politicians, right? Try to get rid of politicians, but we're much more than that. We're customer service agents, we're advocates, we're volunteers, we're involved in special events, we're involved in fundraising, and it's, that's what gets people hooked to this position. That's why people run and run again, and it's a really important position that we hold. And I think that that, we shouldn't diminish that just by putting a price tag on two councillor positions. So I really think that that number nine has worked for many years in the past, and I think that we should still go forward with nine. It's not a common number. Obviously, the most common number is five across Ontario, 195. Almost half of the municipalities in Ontario use five, but again, a majority of them are small, single-tier municipalities spread across central and northern Ontario. Seven is, again, the second most common, and there's only 42 municipalities use nine, but I like nine, and I would like to keep it that way. So thank you. I hope that rationale and reasoning makes sense. Thank you.
Councilor Maine. Mayor Strather?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I am going to speak in favor-
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I am going to speak in favor of both at-large and reducing council. There have been several attributes made, I suggested for the ward system, you have a voice, particular to a ward. When I was councillor, I had people from all over town contacting me, and, and when I campaigned at-large, and, and even when I campaigned as a councillor, I kept being asked, why can't I vote for the entire council? Why can't I pick what I think is going to give me the best result for my municipality, regardless of where they live within the municipality? Who do I think's going to do the best? Why can't I vote for who I think's going to do the best job? I heard it over and over and over again, it was significant, the number of people who were saying that. As far as number goes, I, I would also say that if you look at, if you look at Penetang Machine, they went to at-large, and people have said that when you go to at-large, it tend to favor interest groups, it tends to favor, or disfavor rather, individuals who could, or may want to enter into municipal politics and be on council. I need no further than Penetang Machine in the last election, they went at-large, they had twenty people run, and all the arguments about the costs are higher, you've got to cover more ground and all the rest of it, twenty people ran. Of those twenty people, four, four councillors out of the nine people elected were new, and I suggest to you, and I canvassed some of the people in Penetang Machine, and they have said that these people were well-known in the municipality because of their participation in the municipality, because of their understanding of the issues in the municipality and so on. That gives you that broad cross-section of opinion and understanding of what's going on in the municipality. I recently, today, asked Mayor Penetang Machine what he thought of that, and he initially, back some time ago, was against at-large, but he's come full circle and is very supportive of at-large. He's also, and they have, they have just moved to reduce their council from nine to seven, and I asked him, well, why do that? And he felt that it was a workable number, that it was a, yes, there are cost savings, but also that with respect to committee work and so on, it wasn't that much more onerous for, for, for people, and he thought it might be more efficient in terms of getting business done. I, I happen to agree with that, I, as I said, in Penetang Machine, they ran at-large, there seemed to be no barriers to these twenty people running, and they were broad cross-section of the population, you know, the community itself, so personally, I, I think the number seven works quite well. To Counsel Gordon's point about county, county is structured as mayor, deputy mayor, and then a, an alternate, and that's, that's how their process works. It was discussed last Tuesday, and it was decided that it would stay that way. The council voted against it for a reduction in the number of councillors. The other, the one other thing that said to me in a, by a couple of councillors in, from the county, who, who have at-large, is that they, they find it works quite well, and they're operating in around at, at seven people, no wards, it works very, and they don't see, so I asked the question, does it exclude people? They don't think so. Do they have special interest groups that have risen above everybody else? They're not seeing it. I have seen in one occasion where that has happened, but it seems to have, it's, it's run its course, I've seen it happen in two townships locally, and it seems to has run its course, then you now have representation of the entire population of, in this case, the two townships. So I personally think that the recommendation is proposed by staff is workable, I'm going to support it in its entirety, and I just want to put that on tape.
And so Thank you very much, Your Worship. Counsel McGinn, with your permission, I'm seeing an overwhelming support for at-large, so I'm going to turn it over unless you have a, something else to add. I was going to start talking with regards to the composite of the council, but please go ahead.
I would really like to hear what, I understand where, I understand where you're coming from, but I would really like to hear what Counselor Downer had to say, seeing that he is a past mayor and has been involved in politics in the town of Midland for quite some time, so he has a history, so I will save my comments if you would let me give them to Counselor Downer.
Counsel Downer? Counsel Downer, you care to add anything to the conversation, sir? You're on mute at this point. Thank you.
Yes, I would. I've had the privilege of sitting in each position. Deputy Mayor's position to me is extremely important. He's the right-hand man of the mayor. The mayor can't do something, he steps in and takes over. As far as the ward system, I would, I would agree to eliminating it, but not, I would like to see the composition of council stay at nine. I think it's extremely important. Been around a long time, I was, I was, I was here when they made the change in ninety-four, they changed it because the population was increasing. We have double the population of our neighbor in Penetang Machine, and I think nine is a magic number and it works well for the town of Midland. And that's my opinion.
Thank you very much, Counsel Gordon. So I'm seeing overwhelming support for the ward system. I'm going to, with permission of the council, we're going to now turn it over to the size of council. So we've heard from Mayor Strether is in support, Counsel Gordon obviously is in support of the seven members, Counsel Main was not, and if anyone else has anything to add, please, Counsel Post?
I just wanted to to echo Counsel Main and Counsel Downer, and I think the ward system can go, I know it might be harder to campaign, but I'm sure we'll find a way if, in fact, we're even allowed out by then. I'd like to see it stay at nine. I think nine's very important, I think that the town needs some diversity within council, and in all honesty, all the, the committees and things that I know that all of you do, and I do, I don't know how you could do it with seven. But I still think nine is the number for the residents, because we speak for them, and to eliminate us, to me, it's almost like saying that we're not worth the small income that we do receive. I think when it comes to money, cost savings is not going to come with eliminating councillors. I think there's other ways, because councillors can help make things better.
Thank you, Counsel Post. Counsel McGinn, I apologize, are we going to go to you first? You are my next on the list, but you're up, thank you.
Thank you kindly, Deputy Mayor. So I wanted to thank, I wanted to thank you for what you previously did so that we could let gentlemen with some history speak. Counsel, Counselor Post, I echo what you're saying, I mean, for the amount of money that, that we're making, I recall looking at one of my pay stubs and actually says my per-hour earning, earnings, and it's ten-something, we're making way below minimum wage, so we don't get in this to be rich, and none of us are advocating for, you know, for us to be making any more money, we're advocating for the people and we're trying to do our best, so I believe that when we consider, when we consider the cost savings of removing some of us, that you're also, would also potentially be removed, is different voices and different opinions, and we're, this number is working quite well. I have not been on council before, so I can't relate it to another council, but this is a good number, I understand, and I believe what I'm hearing from, from my peers here, that some of you are echoing the same thing. Definitely, getting rid of the ward system makes sense to me, yes, I believe that there will be a way. Do I believe that it would be a potential detriment to some? Yes, so then you just got to work harder, but we have to work harder. That's what, that's what we're supposed to do, we'll have to put that effort in in anybody else who moves forward. I have had conversations with, with persons in other municipalities where the, the number and the composition of council did change, and they found that there wasn't enough time because we don't make a lot. You don't, you don't become a councillor to get rich, you become a councillor to serve, it comes from your heart, comes from an advocacy place. When the composition of council was reduced, there was a greater need on your time, and the majority of us have other jobs. So for us to be able to do the best that we possibly can for our residents in an area where we are slated to grow, getting rid of councillors, I don't believe is in the best interest of the future generations, or even of the current generations. The people here right now, I don't believe that would be a good idea, I believe we need to stay at nine.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. Counsel Gordon?
This is the beautiful part about having these voices around here. So, you know me, I'm a big compromise guy, and the ward system, it sounds like unanimously, we think there's, you know, letting people vote for who they want, really does make sense, but let's say we leave council at nine for this next election, see what people think about this change, though we've taken kind of a baby step on, eliminate the ward system, leave council intact, and then let the next term, which is, you know, two years away, decide, especially based on voter sentiment, we could do, you know, that next council term could easily contract itself, and we've already eliminated ward system in this term, why maybe do the big bang right now, especially since there doesn't seem to be unanimous support and, and really, you know, there, there isn't really that much money we're saving by pulling two councillors. So we increase democracy by eliminating wards, and maybe we leave council size intact for the next term, and let the next term decide, and based on voter sentiment, whether we shrink, or whoever gets voted in shrinks. That might be an interesting compromise, it doesn't have to be all or nothing.
I like your, let it be, yeah, thank, thank you, Counsel Gordon. Appreciate it. Anything more to add? No, sorry. Counsel Gordon, I didn't mean to cut you off there, any more to add?
Oh, sorry. Well, only that I, you know, earlier I said, based on the feedback, that, that was how I was going to vote, and I'm now getting feedback from my peers and listening to, you know, folks that have a lot of experience on council, let me see if I get the backwards camera right here, right there, you know, and I, I take the wisdom of Counselor Downer very seriously, and I don't think we're doing it a service to the community by putting that one piece off for one term, because we're still taking a big chunk out of the way we've been doing things. So there it is, I, I'm going to change my mind, you know, and you guys have done that to me, so, you know, that's why this works.
That's the great thing about democracy. I had a couple of things to add, if I could, if I could turn the chair over to Mayor Strether? Yes, thank you very much. Now, I sat on council, and I was the one person to bring this forward in two thousand and fourteen to reduce the size of council, and I appreciate what Counsel Gordon has just commented, because I had sat on a, with the wonderful lady, Pat File. Pat File was the one that convinced me, what are you doing? Why would you ever wanted eliminate diversity in your community? And I went home that night and thought about it, and, you know, many conversations with Pat File, she convinced me, I would never thought a conservative and an NDPer would be able to compromise on something, but we really did, and she told me that the amount of money, and we've heard a couple of times here, the amount of money we make is really not the argument you should have, it should be the diversity of your community, and it really did convince me that, you're right, we need more people on council. I could probably come up with an argument that more people should be on, we should expand the size of council, not to reduce it, but I'm not going to go there, I'm sure Counsel File would love if I would, but I will not, but to me, I always look, what are we trying to fix? And I think the ward system was broken, and I think we, we're going to make a big decision, and we're going to make that ward system proper, because I agree, I hear over and over again, why can't I vote for him, or, or when I don't want to just vote for the three people on my ward, I'd rather have the two people from Ward Three represent me. So to me, that was a broken system, and I think we, we're doing a great job to fix it, but I don't believe that nine to seven is broken, I think nine is a good number, I, I think we keep it, I'm going to support nine councillors. Thank you.
We wouldn't fit in the Zoom screen if we didn't have nine.
Yes. Your Worship, you want me to take back over?
Well, needs.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any, so if we could, we have, we could make a, I apologize, I lost the internet here, the town office, and I've lost the motion. Sorry, guys, one second. So if we could make a, I don't know, Madam Clerk, do we need to make an amendment to the motion, because I'm seeing that the ward system will be eliminated, but we stay at nine councillors, or nine members?
If council wishes, the motion can be divided.
Okay, so if council wishes, we're going to divide that motion, the first, first motion would be that the council eliminate the ward system for the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election. I need a mover and a seconder, I have Counsel Gordon, and moved, and seconded by Counsel Downer. All those, are any questions or comments with regards to this motion? All is in favor? I see everybody. Second motion I need would be that Midland to not restructure for the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election and have seven members, sorry, have nine members as follow, mayor at large, deputy mayor at large, nine, sorry, seven council positions elected at large. Any questions, or, oh, sorry, I need a mover and a seconder on that motion, moved by Counsel Downer, seconded by Counsel Main, if that's fine? All is in favor?
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, the motion read that the ward system be eliminated and the composition of council, so it would be that the composition of council in the town of Midland
Remain at nine members.
Well, if you, you would simply defeat that portion of the motion.
So we don't need to change anything? So that would be eliminated, and the composite of town council be seven members? So we, if you're not in favor of going to seven members, please vote against it. Any questions or comments with regards to that? All is in favor? Opposed? Looks like it's opposed, so thank you, Madam Clerk, for your help with that. Everyone understands how we just got to where we got to? Appreciate it, thank, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, anything to add?
Yes, so Deputy Mayor, I would just finalize that entire motion by, so I'll read it, that the staff report, CL two thousand and twenty, twenty thirteen, composition of council for the two thousand and twenty-two municipal election dated June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, be received, and that the clerk be directed to provide notice and to hold a public information session prior to the passing of the bylaw.
Wonderful. So any, and do you need a mover and a seconder with regards to that motion?
Yes, please.
Mover and seconder, moved by Counsel Ochesky, seconded by Counsel Main. Any questions or comments with regards, Counsel Downer? I mean, Counsel Gordon?
Just a quick comment for those following along, anybody that's not happy with the decision that we just made tonight, please come to the public consultations and participate, whether that's on, in, in person, or on Zoom, or however we do it, be part of it, and because this is not etched in stone yet, this is our feelings, it's an emotional time, it's a vote, and things can change at the, after the public consultation, so depending what, what side you're on this, or even if you just want to come and express support, that helps too, please participate in that public meeting, it's very important, this is your democracy that we're deciding tonight, and ultimately will decide after that public meeting.
Well said, Counsel Gordon. Any other questions, comments? All is in favor? I see unanimous, thank you, everyone, appreciate it. Now we have a COVID update from our CEO, Mr. Dino.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and members of council, just wanted to give you a quick update on the COVID situation, and as is pretty standard, lots of news obviously to share, and lots of, lots of changes that we're all adapting to, certainly, if you're outside of Canada- if you're outside of Canada, we saw almost 90,000 cases in India in the last 24 hours. 90,000 cases in 24 hours. A little closer to home, we saw 315 new cases today in Ontario. More than half those cases were among those aged 20 to 39 years old. Two additional deaths were reported. Forty-four patients are currently hospitalized, 20 are in ICU and 12 are on ventilators. So lots of impact, obviously, across the world. And in Midland and North Simcoe, we're fortunate, we don't have any active cases. We're unfortunate that we did have one death through this pandemic, but it continues to wreak its havoc. And I think everyone is, is rightfully so, quite quite vigilant. So we continue to take that tact in everything we're doing. Lots of lots of activity out there. I'm sure everyone's seen it. You know, we had some discussion about, you know, traffic on the roads and that's certainly something we're all seeing. Schools back in and we're seeing lots of more traffic everywhere. This past Monday, town hall opened for, for walk-in traffic, which was great. You know, I spoke with some of the customers who were were very appreciative of being able to have that alternative to the appointment service and doing some of those things online. So they, they certainly appreciated that. Not much volume, I would say. I mean, it's kind of constant, but not overwhelming volumes. I think people are still trying to adjust to life and some of them are probably cautious to get out there. But we are continuing to offer that. We're going to take it week by week as, as we said, we'll certainly pay close attention to what our staff says, but it was good to, good to be able to offer that service to those customers. I want to give a specific shout out to the two people who are working our front desk, Melanie and their co-op student, Daniel, who, who did a fantastic job this week, you know, behind the masks, when they weren't wearing them, there were big smiles and you can see it in their eyes. And I think the customers certainly felt that as well. So thank you to those two for, for doing such an outstanding job. Our recovery team who helped with the signage, getting the reserved customer parking out front, getting the communication out on, on the internet has all helped to make it a pretty smooth transition. So we'll continue to watch it, like I said, and make any changes that are necessary to continue to keep it safe. So, so that was kind of a big event for us. Bylaw enforcement, just, just to clarify, we have been doing some bylaw enforcement on the weekend around the parking situation. So we, we'd receive some feedback through, through you, the councillors and, and from some of the public about, you know, some of the areas not, we needed some additional enforcement on, on parking. So we did do that on the weekend and, and have been giving people the appropriate tickets to enforce that. So just wanted to clarify that. The other area where we're doing a fair bit of work is on the recreation center. So as you know, our recreation center, which accommodates a number of clubs and teams, was one of those larger rec centers that, you know, we had lobbied the government, the health units to give us some dispensation to allow more than 50 people into those areas. So the government did allow that for those rec centers. So you can accommodate more than 50 people, but, and this is the important but, but you have to present the protocol for each of those individual groups to the health unit and get them approved. And for good reason, they want to make sure things are kept safe. They want to make sure that your fire safety plan is, is being taken care of. So we're, we're working with a number of groups, not only sporting groups, but, but groups that, you know, want to provide services, social services to children. As an example, who are interested in, in maybe getting back into the facility sometime soon. So we'll work with them, get their protocols in place, work with the health units to get the approvals in place and hopefully, you know, if, if things don't get any worse, we can continue to, to start to try and deal with the new normal. The last thing I'll say is, you know, I'll express a great deal of appreciation for our residents and to the members of council. We know there's a tremendous amount of fatigue and frustration in the community and dealing with the pandemic. We're seeing that certainly on, on the bylaw side, as you say, we're seeing complaints. And we're seeing this in all kinds of municipalities. It was a discussion with the CAOs that, you know, you can just sense that communities are a little frustrated with it. So we appreciate the patience. We're, we're trying to be as tolerant as we can with, with the services that we're offering and, and we know we're here to serve. But we don't take that for granted. So we're doing our very best to try and keep people safe and support you and hopefully we'll get through this together. Keep washing your hands, though.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dino. Appreciate it. Any questions, councillor Gordon?
I just want to echo the shout out. Congrats to the internal COVID recovery team. This isn't something the public would see, but they produced a video for us, you know, because we don't get into the building much, but all how they've modified the organization and layout and everything they've done that the public that goes to the office experiences now and some of the stuff we got to see behind the scenes. They did a great job and I thought that video was a wonderful way to communicate it. So I know I shared that in an email, but I thought I'd do a public shout out to, to the team. They will be working under extremely, you know, tough times like everybody has, but you know, we got, we kept them working. We kept them employed. They were able to stay off of the Serb and work meaningfully and they've clearly risen to the challenge. So I can't wait to see more of the stuff they've done in the sports and rec center. Without getting into the details, I know the sporting group was, had been having dialogue with councillors about getting back into the rec center and our CEO has been in that dialogue and working with them. So if they're watching tonight, just it's good to hear the, it's, the ball is moving forward. Hopefully this recurrence, this in a long, you know, we knew was coming sort of second phase, doesn't slow that down too much, but there's a commitment by all of us, staff especially, it's really their jobs, not ours, to get you back in there safely when we can do it and not to, you know, show any special favoritism, which we're not, but, you know, don't want to look like that over one group versus another. So kudos to the town staff and to the CEO and, and for what you guys are doing for this COVID. I know I've written you guys over the summer about service deficiencies I saw and, you know, you've addressed them and you're taking it on the chin and you're giving it back and, you know, good on you. So it's, I think together, we're, we are going to get through this thing. There'll be some more hiccups and road bumps, but I appreciate these updates, your clarity, your transparency on things and how quickly you respond to resident emails. Which I find really refreshing. I can forward you something and, you know, not to make this expectation global, but like you answer after hours or even on weekends, you know, when it's your time off, your family time, and you'll still do that to inquiries. So, you know, really, to me, that's going above and beyond and I have a lot of respect for that. So.
Thank you, councillor Gordon. Well said. And I believe we all would echo the same. Councillor Maine?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the update, Mr. Dino. We were reading from the chief medical officer of Simcoe, Muskoka District Health Unit, was now basically trying to raise alarm and raise the alert that people need to not let their guards down and remain vigilant, wash their hands, wear masks. But they also were talking about that we might want to reduce social gatherings. And he even suggested moving from 100 people down to the stage two number of 10. I, when I read that, I immediately reached out to our special events coordinator saying, this is going to potentially impact us in the next few weeks. So do we have, do we know any timeline or I guess we're, every day, every, every day is a new day with this crisis? Is that something that we need to be now adapting for the fall is basically scaling back any special events that we had planned in the horizon?
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Maine. Certainly through you, Deputy Mayor. It is a consideration. I'd say it's probably too early to scale back on the events. We're, we're certainly encouraging all our events coordinators to continue to try and, and come up with some creative ways to, to, to celebrate. Some of them, some of them are, you know, dependent on, on the numbers of people attending, but some of them aren't. If you can do those, what we call reverse parades where you have static floats and you drive through them. So the numbers really are meaningless if you can keep the traffic flowing through and do those types of celebrations. So we're, we're looking at, instead of cancel, how can we, you know, we're trying to, to look at it that way, but certainly the guidance from the health units and you saw the, the provinces considering rolling out new rules on, on social gathering limits. And, and I think that's in, you know, it's just my opinion, but I don't, I think it's pretty accurate. It's, it's in reaction to some of the, the larger areas that are seeing some of those, those impacts. But our, our chief medical officer said, if there is a local breakout that occurs, we can implement those kinds of restrictions if we need to. So if we do see something happening in an area, that might be something we want to consider. I saw in the news today as well that I saw a small, a small northern community high school had to shut down because of a breakup. You know, those types of things may be something we have to deal with. The, the part that's got most people nervous is, is the overlap of the flu season and COVID. And making sure that we can make, make it as easy as possible for those that want to get the flu vaccine to get that vaccine. So we can take that out of the equation when, when, you know, certainly COVID symptoms hit. So it is pretty dynamic in terms of how we're accommodating and everything. I'd say at this point, you know, we're just being very cautious. We're trying to be, try to set ourselves up to have some sort of celebration, you know, this fall because I said, the fatigue and frustration has taken quite a mental toll on so many people. So even if there's small celebrations, you know, I think it's important that we can accommodate them somehow. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments for CEO? Councillor Gordon?
This is a tie-in. I mean, we're going to talk about it later as a motion, but that reverse parade term, I hadn't heard that before and that ties in perfectly to a suggestion that's coming before council tonight because it is important throughout this, we don't lose our humanity and we don't lose our, you know, our, our spirit, right? Without spirit and hope, you know, that's, you can, if you eliminate those two things, you know, humanity goes. So that's, that's a neat phrase. So thank you for, for saying that today. I had never heard it before. We'll hear it again later.
Thank you, councillor Gordon. Any others? We'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Appreciate the update. Always a pleasure. Our next item would be notice of motions. Any notice of motion from council committee this evening? Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. It isn't specifically notice of motion. I had, I'd written something up and sent it into the clerk after the deputation for Lakewood Drive, which I think I called Lakeview Drive earlier by accident. I'm just wondering where that comes in the, in the agenda tonight.
Madam Clerk, do you have that notice of motion from councillor Gordon or does he need to bring it forward at this time?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I do have the motion that was prepared. And it reads that council received the petition provided by Mr. Tom Gartzinski on behalf of approximately 70 residents on Lakewood Drive, requesting a reduction to the speed, in the speed limit. And that schedule 12 to bylaw 2020-18 be amended by reducing the speed limit on Lakewood Drive from 50 kilometers per hour to 40 kilometers per hour anytime.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll see you on our next agenda. I appreciate that.
All right. I was just wondering, a lot, a lot of times we have these motions and we deal with them in the same meeting because they stem from deputations. So I know this is the part where we give advance notice for the next meeting, but I thought perhaps we would be able to deal with that motion this evening. I just wasn't sure where it plugs in.
Madam Clerk, I just want to make sure we're following all the rules. Does, does that need to go on our agenda or is that something we could have some vote on tonight?
If, if council wishes a two-thirds, two-thirds vote would be required. So if council is wishing to address this this evening, then certainly it can be done.
Okay. Now that would go under the next section, not mine. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Wonderful. So we'll bring that up at the next, the worship will have to bring that up if that's fine with councillor Gordon. We'll have to get a vote, two-thirds vote, but I'm sure it won't be a problem. Councillor Downer, do you have something to bring forward?
Yes, I'd like to direct staff, if I could, to find out if there's any legislation regarding farm animals being in a, the same area as a dug well within the town members of the town of Midland. You know, people that have their own water supply. And if there's anything out of the Wackerton inquiry that, that is on the books that we could use to legislate it because there is a problem, I feel, with a couple of residents.
Yes, agreed. Madam Clerk, you care to touch on that or do we have to bring a motion forward for the next meeting?
So I can work with councillor Downer on, on preparing the motion that he would like to bring forward and it would come on the next agenda under motions and other items for, sorry, motion for which notice was given. So if
Very good.
And councillor Downer, I'm available anytime to help with that. Appreciate it. Thank you for bringing it forward. Any other notice of motion? I see none. General announcements? Any announcements for this evening? Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. Just a quick one here. I, first time in, well, for as long as I lived here, I got an arrears notice for my taxes, for my property taxes. And needless to say, I was shocked because that all happens automatically from my bank. So my wife, God bless her, followed up on it because it was kind of embarrassing, to tell you the truth, that it would even have my name on it and get sent to my address. Anyway, she followed up on it and it turns out that it was just an oversight that the town apparently just mistakenly did not send the bills like they normally bill the bank to National Bank customers. So anybody that banks with a National Bank, if you are on those things where your bank just pays your property taxes, you may have gotten arrears notice too. So without, I'm not throwing anybody on the bus. Mistakes happen. It was COVID. People are working, you know, either at home or remotely or whatever. But that did happen and that was the explanation given. The bank confirms it. So the town looked after it immediately. You know, there's not going to be a interest charge and I guess they're billing National Bank now for all the customers that pay their taxes through National Bank. But I wanted to share that because it's just a thing that happened. And if you got it and you're scratching your head, just get ahold of the town. They're really good about it and they'll get you sorted out. All right. And it won't be any troubles that way. But, you know, I just thought it's kind of news, you know, councillor Gordon doesn't pay his property taxes. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows I do and it probably is done now. So that's my announcement.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Gordon. Any other questions or announcements? Councillor Maine?
Yeah. So if, if councillor Gordon's in arrears, does that mean the town of Midland owns his home? I, I'm just kidding. But yes, please do, please do pay your taxes. I just wanted to share. I just wanted to share with you, my, my wife and children were at St. Marie Park yesterday and they witnessed an incredible nature phenomenon. They saw eight snapping turtles emerge out of the ground and little baby turtles, you can imagine my kids were just so ecstatic. So if you love nature too and love the Y River, check out the Y Marsh because the visitor center is now back open again. The last few weeks, over the summer, it's been free to explore, but the visitor center is now open. So if you want to see a snapping turtle and if you want to see the swans and the feed the chickadees, I love the Y Marsh. Go there all the time. So please support that. And if you want some plants, there's a plant sale at the farmer's market this weekend. The Midland Garden Club, it has a lovely plant sale at 9:00 AM through the farmer's market hours. So if you want to check that out before you check out your Terry Fox run, which of course is this Sunday at 10:00. And so we've, we're going to proclaim Terry Fox Day and we even have a flag raising for this Friday. And so it's a virtual event. Everyone just go out and find, find some wilderness, find some trails, go for a run, go for a bike, do something for the family. Think of those who are suffering with cancer and donate to the cause. So it's a really important thing that we always do every year because Terry Fox, again, is such a huge inspiration to us. And finally, I wanted to speak to another inspiration. One of my neighbors passed away a few weeks ago and I didn't realize that he had, but had volunteered and was involved in the town. So to the family of Ray McLarney, our condolences to Jane and the family. And we just want to thank Ray for all his years of volunteering. I spoke to Fred Flood and he told me all these great stories about Ray being involved with the BIA in the eighties and he even was on the Parking Authority. So with the BIA in the eighties, and he even was on the Parking Authority, so, I just never know, you know, would people have been involved in the, the community for so long, and I just want to say thank you to Ray and condolences on his passing, so that's the announcements for me, uh, thank you.
Thank you Counsel Maine, uh, Counsel Cunningham?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I just want to speak on the culture side of things, I know a lot of us are doing things like going to the Y Marsh, doing our staycations and exploring things at home, so don't forget to check out the Culture Alliance website and Facebook page for some inspirations, for some prizes, and in fact, our Chamber of Commerce is running a little contest or program right now for arts, that you can go, call ahead, get a little package of paints and a canvas, so you can paint a picture, this is for young children, I'm afraid, if you want to do one for grownups, it's a crayon contest that the Huronia Museum is running, where you can crayon a group of seven, one at the chamber, just for the little guys, you know, between three and 14 years old, they'll take any age, pick up that little kit, and paint a picture of why you love living in our region, and get it back in by the end of September. So, nice opportunities, check out the culturealliance.ca to see what those are, and participate, have fun locally.
Thank you very much, any others? Counsel Gordon?
Really to spread the wealth around, so this is just further to, uh, Rick Laney Way being, uh, you know, that's happening, I just wanted to say that the town put out an invite for those who aren't on the Facebook or, uh, social media, uh, 2:00 PM on Tuesday, September 29th, uh, down at the Harbor Office, obviously, where the dedication's happening, so any well wishers want to come down and see that, and, uh, you know, do the COVID, you know, elbow bump with Rick, uh, just bring a mask, you know, we got to watch our gatherings and, uh, social distance, but come on down and, and well wish, that's 2:00 PM on Tuesday, the 29th, down at the, the new Rick Laney Way.
Thank you very much, any other, uh, questions or, uh, announcements? Before we go, uh, go to the motion, I wish everyone a, uh, happy Rosh Hashanah, and, uh, all the best to, uh, the great, oh, High Holiday. Um, so a motion moved by Counsel Prost and, uh, seconded by Counsel Gordon, that the committee whole rise and report. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Wonderful, thank you, the worship all yours.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, uh, next item is a, uh, motion to adopt actions, the committee of the whole, so moved by Counsel Oshewski, seconded by Counselor Maine, that the recommendation of the committee of the whole for the meeting of September 16th, 2020, be adopted as resolutions of council, all in favor? Thank you, that does carry. Next item on the agenda is, uh, motions for which notice was given, and I think I'll start by picking up where we left off in committee of the whole, which has to do with the deputations, uh, for a 40 kilometers per hour limit on Lakewood. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read that motion?
Yes, Your Worship, so that council rece, or, um, so first of all, we had full agreement, two-third, there was a two-thirds vote, um, on whether to amend the agenda to permit consideration of this motion?
Counsel, please indicate whether they agree. Yes, we do.
Okay, okay, and who moved that, sorry?
My care to, uh, Counsel Maine.
And?
Counselor Cunningham.
Thank you. Uh, that council received the petition provided by Tom Gar- Garzinski on behalf of approximately 70 residents on Lakewood Drive requesting a reduction in the speed limit, and that Schedule 12 to bylaw 202018 be amended by reducing the speed limit on Lakewood Drive from 50 kilometers per hour to 40 kilometers per hour anytime.
Thank you Madam Clerk, um, I have a feeling if I just, uh, call a question, I know where this is going, so I will do that, I'll call a question, on, uh, sorry, Counselor Maine, you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, just a quick point, obviously this is a, a stopgap, uh, initiative to install a 40 sign, I know there's still a lot of work to do on traffic calming, and so we have an active transportation meeting next week, that I'd love to bring up and propose some more, uh, traffic calming ideas to take that idea to the next level. So obviously, we're going to talk about the 40 right now, and there's subsequent traffic calming stuff, because that's in the works anyways, so thank you.
Thank you Counselor. Uh, Counsel Downer?
Should we, should we not run this by the OPP, like, uh, anytime we've ever changed speed limits, or talked about changing speed limits or signs, we've always involved the OPP or the Midland Town Police, which are no longer, but I, I think it's advisable to advise the OPP on this matter, myself, I'm not against doing it, but I think they should be involved in it and get their opinion on it.
Any comments or questions on Counsel Downer's observation? Counsel Gordon?
He's got a point there, I mean, they would have, uh, that has happened in the past, I think it happened with Fourth Street, um, and it was more, more concerns about, uh, you know, if there's anything that was a knee-jerk reaction, for example, the council's making that was unenforceable, or was going to cause problems for the police to deal with. Well, that's a valid, um, comment, I just, I don't think it applies in this case, it's a tiny little dead-end street, and, uh, we just have to provide notice that, that the speed limit's changed, um, and it's going to take a while until it shows up in your GPS and Google and whatever, you know, that it's actually changed, but, uh, there's, I don't know that it would be worth, um, putting the brakes on this thing tonight, just for that, when I could, you know, just from my experience, I mean, I've been out of it for a couple of years, but I don't know that there would be anything, they would say it's your, your jurisdiction, do what you want, you know, just put the sign up, follow the notification requirements, and they'll enforce it. But just my two cents, but it's not, it's not a, not a bad suggestion.
And I then suggest maybe that we just modify the motion in some way, can recommend a change of motion, amendment of the motion, to read at the end, uh, subject to, uh, consultation with OPP, or approval by OPP.
That's a good idea.
Can somebody move that then? Counselor Downer, do you want to move that? Counselor Gordon, seconded it. Did you catch that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I did, just for clarification, um, is, is Counsel Downer also moving me the full motion? And not just the amendment, I, I just, I know Counsel Gordon had moved the motion, but I, I don't believe there was a second on the main motion.
Yes, I think there was, actually.
Okay.
That wasn't.
Okay. Oh, Counsel Cunningham.
That's correct.
Thank you.
See in your's moment. So could you read the amended motion? I believe we have to vote on that now.
Is council voting on the proposed amendment? So that was by, okay, so the proposed amendment was just, um, to add, uh, subject to the approval of the OPP.
All in favor? That carries Madam Clerk, now that we have to vote on the main motion.
That's correct, so I will reread the main motion. That council received the petition provided by Mr. Tom Garzinski on behalf of approximately 20 residents on Lakewood Drive, requesting a reduction in the speed limit, and that Schedule 12 to bylaw 202018 be amended by reducing the speed limit on Lakewood Drive from 80 kilometers per hour to 40 kilometers per hour anytime, subject to, uh, approval by the OPP.
Did you say?
Counsel Gordon?
Sorry?
I think she said from 80 to 40, maybe she just said that, but.
No, from 50 kilometers per hour to 40 kilometers per hour anytime, subject to approval by the OPP.
You have a mover and a seconder on that.
I, I believe it was originally Counsel, uh, Counsel Gordon and Counsel Cunningham.
Yep, so Counsel, you've heard the main motion, uh, all in favor? Thank you, that carries unanimously, um, thank you Madam Clerk for your assistance there. I now have a motion moved by Counsel Ross, and I'll just read the motion, so get a second for this, but, uh, get some care to second that motion from Counsel Ross. Counsel McInnes, thank you. Sorry Deputy Mayor Ross, I think I said Counsel.
All right.
Uh, let staff be directed to develop a mandatory stormwater connection policy for buildings on King Street between Bay Shore Drive and Young Street, prior to December 2020, and include options to assist owners with the implementation cost. Counsel, you've heard the motion, Deputy Mayor, do you want to speak to that?
I can briefly, um, as we know, where the King Street is being reconstructed, and, uh, there's some costs that will be, uh, required from some of the store, store owners on that, between, uh, Bay Shore Drive and Young Street, and I just want to make sure that town is able to help in any, in every way possible to make it as easy as possible to get those connections.
Uh, thank you, and I, if I'm not mistaken, this is to, because we've now twins Blackwater and Stormwater, so we have two separate, uh, pipes running through here.
Correct.
Downtown, that we're looking for, um, compliance, so that, uh, we're not self-defeating our investment in the, uh, infrastructure downtown.
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, so I have Counsel Downer, and then I have Counsel Gordon wishing to speak to this.
Is, is there a, uh, cost associated with this?
Uh, I believe there will be, yes, uh, to connect to.
Do we know, do we know how much it is, or?
I do, I think it's to, so very, very much site-specific, Counsel Downer.
See. It'll be nice to have a figure before. I'd like, I'd like to know how much it's going to cost us.
Okay, uh, Counsel, sorry Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you, and part of the motion is for a report, uh, to come back stormwater connect policy, so we can come back, and I'm hoping that a cost will be, uh, included in that report that comes back prior to December 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Not approving anything at this point, we're just approving, uh, our staff to look into it and come up to what the cost would be.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you Counsel Downer, uh, Counsel Gordon?
Thank you, I had a chance to talk to some of the impacted, uh, store owners as well, they reached out to me, um, and I saw the pictures, uh, it wasn't just the fact that they're combined, it's that they actually didn't even exit their building, they went, you know, next door, and then they joined a pipe over there, and that's happened in a few spots, because there was no code or no one cared, I don't know what the deal was back in the day, but clearly now we're, got this new infrastructure and it has to be done right, so, the, the complaints I was, was hearing is that they didn't actually object to the fact this had to be done, uh, and they understood that it was a cost, and then if this was your house, you know, too bad, right, like it's your house, you got to pay for that, um, but they, their concern was that the town kind of put them in this position, like, you know, and I championed, like, doing it this year, so I mean, it was kind of me, you know, we all did, but, you know, with, we, had we said, okay, this is going to happen, you know, in two or three years from now, and then they came back to us, you know, with a tale of woe, that they hadn't planned or saved to do it, it might be different, but we kind of forced this on them, uh, that we're doing this now, and they didn't really have a chance to budget it, and it's not always just the business owner, it's the building owner, right? And not, not all business owners are the building owner down there, and they're, someone has to pay for this, and it doesn't seem right, like, for the broader tax base, that everyone in the town should have to pick up the bill for this, because they all knew largely that this was an issue, or they had, ought to have known at some point where the pipes go, but it makes sense to give them some, uh, some relief, and, you know, compromise, whatever that looks like, 50/50, or 60/40, or, you know, I don't, I don't know what it costs, so I mean, it's hard to really put a percentage on it yet, but I agree that the costs are going to be a little different, depending on the severity of the trenching and whatever they had to do to move, put a new pipe in where there wasn't one before. So I, I can, committed to the folks down there that I would, you know, I'm glad Deputy Mayor Ross brought this forward, if he hadn't, then I would have been happy to. Let's find a way to help them out, this is a one-time thing, uh, it's not licensed for everybody that has a clogged pipe or whatever, come to the town and ask for, for assistance, but, uh, you know, this was our, doing our timeline, and everyone kind of knew this was going to happen, so whatever we can do to help them out, I would support, uh, you know, as long as it isn't undue hardship, uh, which, you know, arguably it's not going to be, and it's not every building, it's just a few buildings. So I look forward to this, uh, policy or this report, let's see what, to Counsel Downer's point, let's see what the numbers look like, and where compromises be, can be made, whether it's in labor parts, or, you know, just pending a check for part of the costs, um, you know, we'll see what that looks like when it comes here. So I appreciate you bringing this forward for the, for the folks downtown.
Thank you Counsel, and I know, uh, as the Deputy Mayor said, this is, uh, in response to Counsel Downer's concern, uh, there is a report being brought forward for council's consideration, uh, with respect to, I suspect we'll know by then approximately how many, uh, businesses are in, or, or structures are impacted, and we'll be able to get a better cost estimate, and also staff will be bringing forward recommendations about how to ameliorate the, uh, these, uh, these, uh, these costs that business owners are, or building owners are going to incur. Counsel McInnes, you had a comment or question?
Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to reserve it until we get the report, I think that would be a more appropriate time, there's a lot that I believe we as a council learned about this process, and it's not, now is not the time for me to bring up what I was going to bring up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you Counsel Downer, um, so, uh, any other further, any further comments or questions with respect to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Um, so, next, uh, notice motion is moved by Counselor Prost. It reads that, uh, well, you've all seen it, but I'll read it for the sake of the audience, staff prepare draft, site-specific interim control bylaw to deal with resident concerns, including but not limited to noise, waste, and property standards of unregulated short-term rentals on Sumac Lane. Uh, can I get a second for that? Counsel Downer, thank you. I'll open the floor to comments or questions, please. Counsel Maine?
Um, you mentioned to it, uh, earlier, uh, Mayor Strathairn, about, uh, how this is a not a common, uh, tool that's used, and I'd love to hear from our planning staff about if this is an appropriate tool to use for this, uh, measure. Obviously, short-term rental accommodations, uh, many municipalities have modernized, I just don't think an interim control bylaw, it seems to be a very severe, uh, tool for this, um, incidence, uh, incident, so if, um, if Mr. Elliott could, uh, speak to what this, uh, tool is, and if it's, would be appropriate for this, at this time.
Thank you Counsel, Mr. Elliott?
Well, I believe he has to be promoted from an attendee to a panelist, because he is with us.
Madam Clerk, can you promote, uh, Mr. Elliott? There he is, thank you. Nope, gone now. And he's back, Mr. Elliott?
Well, thank you, and, and through you, uh, your worship, um, to members of, uh, of committee, first and foremost, um, a little bit of an interpretation of the current zoning bylaw in the town of Midland, um, it dates back to 2004, which certainly predates the sharing economy that we found ourselves in today, so I don't believe in my research and interpretation, that it had ever contemplated this sharing type economy, and I don't see it as prohibiting short-term rentals, nor did it contemplate long-term rentals or seasonal rentals, so I believe it's really silent on that, and it really doesn't give the town in its current form, a mechanism to restrict them, the way it's written today. An interim control bylaw, and I, I've had the, um, fortune of dealing with this in three occasions in my career, and in my research and dealing with other planners as well, the real effect of an interim control bylaw is to freeze things as they are today, so this would not have the effect of, uh, withdrawing a current use that somebody's legally permitted to do today. What it would do is, would restrict anybody else on Sumac Lane from starting a short-term rental, um, business over the next while, and the one thing, and why we call it the sledgehammer in the planning world, is because it's not a public process, and, and planners, we love public process, we think it's really important, and it's valuable. And planners, we love public process. We think it's really important and it's valuable. We have no idea at this time if other people have maybe purchased properties or had business plans to help, you know, pay for their, you know, financial arrangements for their properties through short-term rentals at all. And therefore it can have some unintended consequences. So I would just caution council about that now. It is a tool that is used on occasion for sure. It can be site-specific to Sumac Lane if that's your desire. But I don't believe that that tool in itself would really actually alleviate the issues that were shared with you by the resident today.
Thank you, Mr Elliott. Can I just ask you one thing? Would this sort of issue be contemplated under the CBR, comprehensive bylaw review that we're about to engage in?
Yes, thank you. Through you, your worship. We do have to undertake a review of zoning bylaw. As you know, we have a new official plan and under the Planning Act, we actually have to initiate a review of our zoning bylaw. It would be my intention to come through council through the budget cycle to seek funds and support to do that kind of comprehensive review. And dealing with short-term accommodations would certainly be something we could contemplate if it's the will of council to do so at that time.
Thank you. I have councillor Shewski.
My question was just answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you very much. I apologize, Mr Elliott. Did you, our five is short-term rental or permitted use?
Through you, your worship, a short-term rental is not contemplated and Ms Lawson did reiterate the terminology used in the bylaw and there is a restriction about commercial accommodation. So that did cause me to do some investigation and some research. And like I say, the, the bylaw was written almost 20 years ago, far predating the sharing economy we're seeing today. So in short answer, I don't see any restriction in there about the tenure of any rental, let alone short-term rental. So if someone was to strictly interpret that, the fear would be that nobody in the town of Midland would be able to rent a property, whether it's short or long term. They wouldn't be able to rent their cottage for a week while they weren't there. So I don't believe the intention at the time was to restrict short-term rentals or long-term rentals. My interpretation around that commercial accommodation restriction is to not allow formal businesses to operate such as a hotel or motel in a dwelling, which seems like an oddity. But I don't believe the intention was to restrict rentals.
All of that could because if I understand correctly, and I'm, I'm not a planner by any means, but if they make, they come up with the uses and make a list and if it is not on that list, it automatically reverts back to non-conforming. If I, if I understand correctly, so there is an argument that it is a non-conforming use of that property. Am I misinterpreting how the planning act goes or am I reading too much into it?
So through, through your worship. The planning act really, and when you look at the regulations, they tend to be more around the use of land and property. It's about the land use, not how the land is being occupied. For instance, it doesn't regulate that I have to have only three children or I can't have more than five children. It doesn't really speak to who occupies the land use. It speaks more about the land use itself.
So I guess the question we have for you then, is there a solution you have in mind to solve this issue?
So if it's the, through you, your worship, if it's the will of council to, to direct staff to address short-term accommodations, there's a couple of things that we could choose to do. I think it would be appropriate to come back with a work plan and identify what problem we're trying to solve. What the opportunities are and maybe a bit of an environmental scan of what's going on in other communities. You know, even Toronto has struggled with how to deal with this property. And other seasonal property oriented municipalities have had the same challenge. I looked and I did try to do some research as this became apparent to us. The township of Muskoka Lakes is undertaking something similar. And if there's any municipality that deals with rentals, it would be them. In the meantime, what they've done is they've implemented a code of conduct. And they've asked their property owners to share it with the renters and these are the expectations as renters that we as a municipality expect. That's one possible remedy we could do as we, as we research our options and opportunities here. Again, on the cautioning you about total restrictions on short-term rentals. We do know that, you know, people are challenged to, to be able to pay for their homes and pay for their property taxes in these days. So there could be some very unintended consequences if we don't do this very deliberately and carefully. So I think an opportunity to research it properly. In the meantime, I think my advice to the landowners on Sumac would be to exercise the rights to call the fire department, to call the police when people are behaving poorly. And I think that would be the quickest remedy in these circumstances.
Thank you, Mr Elliott. Just got councillor Gordon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Elliott. You made things a little more clear for me. I'm not a big believer in the nuclear option, like, you know, especially on the first offense. So if there is a code of conduct, I think, I think that's a neat compromise because the things you're talking about, what, you know, should happen actually form the substance of the next motion we're going to be discussing. It's to empower you to do exactly that. So I'll leave that for the next yuck yuck. But this code of conduct intrigues me. Is it, is it enforceable and does it have any teeth and who enforces it? Because that might be a good stopgap in the meantime.
So I fell short of being able to speak with anybody in Muskoka Lakes about how they actually enforce that. So that's some research that I could definitely do as we explore this. But what I do understand is that the expectation is that these renters are obligated in some way, shape or form, or whether it's just kind of a goodwill gesture and they acknowledge that that's the expectations of them. And it, it deals with things that we wouldn't have concern for here in Midland, but we could tailor it here accordingly. And it, it would simply deal with things about, you know, respecting the neighbors, about noise, about how you treat your garbage. All of these types of things, even lighting at night. They speak about those issues in, in the code of conduct in Muskoka Lakes. But I would be definitely, you know, I would be happy to research that and speak with my colleagues up there and see how effective they found it to be.
Thank you very much. If, if the mover and second wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind seeing this motion retooled a bit and empowering staff to do that. Because I don't know that the nuclear option is the right option. I know that from the residents' perspective, they just want this problem to go away. They're not looking for us to, you know, drop a nuke on their neighbor.
Thank you councillor. I think that as you alluded to a lot of what Mr Elliott has said, Mr Ellie Germain, to the next motion. This one basically is around the use of an interim control bylaw. My understanding of talking to Mr Elliott is that there can be unintended consequences of using, using a sledgehammer in this case and so this is, I actually did not allow councillor Prost the opportunity to speak to the motion. So I feel somewhat remiss about that. Did you wish to add anything to this councillor Prost?
Yes, I just really want to speak on behalf of Mrs Lawson. I think this is very site-specific and I'm not going to try to direct staff to do something that's not in everybody's best interest. But this is, this house is called Mary Jane's Place. It's used as a motel. It's referred to by the owner as a business. And I think that's kind of the big picture. What is it going to, is it going to continue and how is it going to continue? Because it's affecting their well-being and their, just their everyday life. And is that what we, when you buy a house, you can just do that? Maybe you can, but that's what I think that we want to know. And how could maybe something be put out there to maybe help smooth this because this person bought a house and they're paying residential taxes, not commercial taxes that, well, they might be, but I don't think they are because that's never been brought up. So there's a lot of other issues here that I think just need to be looked at for everybody's benefit.
I agree. Sorry, I don't disagree with you. I do think though that there are, you know, in the absence of actually going and trying to get people to come out there and deal with their problems for them, whether it's unattended fires, so it's the fire department, or whether it's bylaw with respect to property standards or littering and appropriate placement of garbage and whatever. So, but to your point, having had something like this next door to me where I live. As I said to Ms Lawson. The peer pressure goes a long way. And there are other options with respect to what, I don't know, don't have to look into it, but and where I am, restriction of access across the road was one option as well. So regardless of my situation, I understand what Mrs Lawson is going through to a certain extent. We're here to look, look at the use of interim control bylaw. So if there are no other comments around this, then I'm going to call the question on, on this particular motion and we'll move on to the next motion. So all those in favor of the motion? All of those against? So the motion, the motion does not carry. So we're to the next motion, which again is by, moved by councillor Prost and it reads that for the sake of people in the audience, it reads that the staff report to council on regulatory options for licensing, registration, taxation and enforcement of short-term rentals and ghost hotels in the town of Midland. Can I get a second or for councillor Prost's motion? Councillor Shewski? Thank you. Council comments or questions around this particular motion? Councillor Gordon?
I was just going to say, let's, let's let councillor Prost take the lead on this.
Oh yes, I beg your pardon. Yes. I almost, I almost repeated the mistake. Councillor Prost, what's, what's your commentary around this?
Really the same as above, the last one. But maybe if we had some licensing and taxation enforcement and we created something around what a residential home can be. Maybe that would be helpful in the future. Because I haven't heard any other problems. This is, this problem is, I really believe is site-specific to Sumac. And it, it's a disruption and it's, it's not working for the residents there, but I'm sure they'll work it out and we'll see if we can help them in any way. But maybe some taxation would change it, whether people are going to, you know, buy a home and rent it out. You know, like a, be an Airbnb or short-term rentals and call it a business. And that, that creates a lot of stuff going on in a little dead-end street. But it could be anywhere. So this is, this would be maybe in general. Maybe we need to have something in order so that it protects the people wanting to do that and the people that you know, that are the neighbors and they're not crazy about it, but these are kind of the guidelines and these are the rules. And we would have answers next time. And maybe we would be able to help. So maybe not necessarily that wording, if somebody has better wording, but I'd like to see something in place that protects everybody.
Thank you. I have councillor Cunningham, then I have councillor Gordon. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, your worship. I think that absolutely every municipality is starting to be plagued by challenges with some short-term rentals, especially as they pertain to the party house use of the short-term rentals. And I think that Mr Elliott really provided us with a good solution to bring this into our zoning bylaw review and do those studies, take some time to intentionally consider how we can support those people who are respecting the short-term rental option in order to both have their location more affordable, but also because it does bring in tourists to our area that might not otherwise come here. Whether those are family members or friends of people who already have residence here. There are some people doing this very well. And I think there are, I think if what, six levers that we can pull as a municipality as it comes to really defining and refining how we accept and manage short-term rentals. And if Mr Elliott is able to take that on as part of this project to review whether licensing is an option, even whether it's, you know, secondary units being the only, so if you aren't in a primary residence doing the rental. Whether that might be something that is appropriate for our region and really dig into many of the options that councillor Prost has in this motion and perhaps a few more even.
Thank you councillor. Mr Elliott, any comment on that?
Through your worship, I think coming back with a work plan that could identify some options, implications, opportunities and like I said, a bit of an environmental scan. That would be educational for all of us to really understand what problem we're trying to solve today in the town and what are the potential future problems that we might want to solve as well. There's a suite of options. As I mentioned, we could look at code of conducts, we could look at licensing. But those certainly do come with, you know, some implications in terms of how do you actually monitor and manage a licensing program? How do we actually enforce these? I think as of today, my understanding is that there are about 50 properties registered through some kind of accommodation sharing program. That doesn't mean there's 50 available at any given time, but we as staff have done some research in the past and we don't believe that there has been a problem. I think it's quite rightly pointed out to one bad neighbor here. But that again, I can totally understand how that can be very frustrating to a homeowner. So in, in short answer, I think that we can come back with a bit of a scan. If it's the will of council to tackle this as a concern. And, and then take this step by step going forward and maybe licensing as appropriate in Midland, maybe it's not, but let us do our homework on that. And we can bring some information back for council's consideration.
So my question to you then would be, you've heard the wording of this motion, is that too restrictive for you to all-encompassing? Does it work for you in terms of coming back with that environmental scan?
I believe the motion gives us a bit of latitude to work with and the intention would be that staff would return with a with an options and kind of a suite of opportunities. So I would be okay with it. Thank you.
Councillor Gordon.
Thank you. I'm hearing everything I wanted to hear on this. I would like to, if you could, Mr Elliott, have a look at this code of conduct and see how quickly you know, if it's feasible, maybe get that back to us sooner than the more holistic review. Because if it is possible and it is something with its inability, we could have our test guinea pig, you know, on Sumac Lane. Because I really like to do something for them. While we, you know, postulate and consider short-term rental regulations and whatever, like a lot of other municipalities are. And again, we'll, we'll find, I'm sure we'll find partnering with us Airbnbs, because they don't want to be shut out of municipalities. They want to be partners. So I'm sure we're going to get lots of input. They've probably already done a lot of this research, albeit you gotta be a little suspicious of it because, you know, they're obviously have something to gain, but there's probably stuff that they can share with you to make life easier. But this whole notion of a, something we could tailor, you know, specifically to the Sumac problem right away. I would, I would love to see something like that come back sooner than the bigger report. Because I don't want them to think that, you know, well, typical to government, you just go away and think about things for a year and then they just feel like we didn't really address their concerns, even though we are on a more global perspective. So that's, that's not part of the motion, but that would just be my ask to you that if, you know, when you start to, assuming this passes tonight. When you start to put the priorities together, if you could, now that you've sort of piqued our interest in this code of conduct, if you could come back to us maybe with like a mini report sooner than later.
Thank you councillor. Deputy Mayor Ross.
I'm good. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor May, did I see your hand up there?
Thank you, your worship. Oh geez. It's getting late. I'm forgetting what I was going to ask. It was basically a question on so obviously AMO has done extensive work gathering sharing economy or shared economy. And they've been municipal speakers at many years past. And so luckily we have a lot to draw on. Town of Blue Mountains might have been the first to do short-term rental accommodations. We heard from their lawyer Leo Longo. And they, their short-term rental accommodation bylaw is probably one of the first and most comprehensive. So I guess the question is, so we heard that this, this can be incorporated into the zoning bylaw update. Or can it also just be a standalone planning process where we review shared accommodation? Because that sounds like the standalone approach is what many other local municipalities, Tiny, pardon me, Tay or Madante, they, those sound like standalone short-term rental accommodation reviews. That was the question for you.
Through you, your worship. You can undertake this as a planning study and deal with it from a zoning perspective. A more comprehensive way to be, to look at licensing and all of the other things that come hand in hand with that as kind of a suite of goods at the same time. Now I do understand in Oro that there are recently adopted zoning bylaw that did address this, has been appealed to the LPAT. So it would be reasonable to expect an appeal. And then you'd probably go through a zoning bylaw that will likely be appealed anyways. So you want to be careful about how much money do we want to spend on legal fees defending positions and things like that. So one of the things I'd like to do is actually look around at the adjacent municipalities and let's, let's use what other people have learned and figure out how we can apply those. So if we could do a bit of an environmental scan, I think that we can look at what option is best in, in Midland. To what extent is this managed through zoning? To what extent is it managed through licensing? The other thing is that we really want to watch carefully what these organizations are doing themselves. We recognize that We recognize that by and large, the biggest problem is these party houses. And these organizations are addressing that themselves as well. So how do we latch on to that work that's happening there at the same time?
Yeah, it's just a quick follow up. That was, that was the point I was going to make was that it sounds like Airbnb is now cracking down on some of these renegade rogue party houses, as you use the term. So we're talking about code of conduct, it sounds internally, the Airbnb is developing their own code of conduct. And so locally, people are going to have to abide by that, although we should probably also start modernizing our bylaws to think about this because as you're saying, zoning bylaws from 2004 and we've known for many years that we're going to have to update it anyways. So that sounds like a perfect opportunity to incorporate this issue, which is actually affecting all around town because we haven't heard issues about short term rental accommodations. It doesn't mean short term rental accommodations are not elsewhere in the town. So having a comprehensive approach through the zone by law, I think that sounds like a great idea. So thank you. Thank you for giving us input on that. Thank you.
Your councillor, councillor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. Rob Elliott, for what you, what you said clarifying, you know, that we're specifically talking about something that, you know, as you coined it, a party house. It'll be really nice when this comes forward because we'll also be able to, to use the study and, and because it will, it will be a review when it comes to our hack committee. So I want to be, I want to make the point here, you know, while we're being live televised that we're not talking about, that we're not talking about group homes, we're not talking about temporary emergency rental situations, that this is a private dwelling that has a name and is in, you know, is in a small residential neighborhood and that it is, we're talking about party houses. So thank you as well for the comment that you made because I was going to bring that up, that Airbnb has been reviewing it and been reviewing their policy and how it is that they can assist a homeowner who learns that you know, this, that their places is not being occupied in a pleasant manner. So pretty much you nailed the points that I was going to ask questions of and, you know, to make points of clarity. Pretty much nailed it.
Thank you. Councillor McGinn, councillor Gordon.
I just thought I should probably for the people that are out there operating short term rentals and Airbnb's and may be screaming at their TVs right now. We're not coming for your guns, you know, like this is not meant to shut down their, your business or your ability to run them from the lack, for the fact that we only have one person complaining so far is a testimony to the good operators out there that are doing good jobs. So this is not, this intention of this conversation is not to go and find some way to tax the hell out of you to make it not possible or really restricted. So you can't do this anymore. It's just about understanding how many these are in our community, making sure that everybody's got the same playbook. That there's a reasonable expectation that all the operators can have, that it's going to be run the same. So they're not competing against each other for who's going to be more lenient. I, I see, I just don't want anyone taken away from this conversation that we're, we're, you know, trying to address a problem that arguably maybe doesn't exist right now. We're just trying to be prudent and modernizing some of the language in our policies and, and planning and zoning. So yeah, that's my interpretation of this conversation.
Thank you, councillor. I would just let council know that the county convened a full day workshop on this very matter. Ramara and Oramadati were pushing pretty hard for that tiny township also has some issues apparently. City of Toronto was there, Town of Blue Mountain was there discussing their stuff. One thing, the different thing about Town of Blue Mountain was they, to councillor Gordon's point, they're not out there to penalize the operators who exist and are doing a good job. It was really to put a framework around in consultation with those operators about what works and how they're working, why it works for them. The other thing to understand is that there are, are people in this town who are renting and have been doing so for decades without any complaint from their neighbors. And those people are the ones that you probably want to talk to. And so you don't want to scare them half to death by, as councillor Gordon was saying. So I think it's also important. So there's our test for grandfathering provisions. You, they're, they're not the Airbnb types, they're mom and pop people renting their cottage, just as Australia sent to pay their taxes. Which keep going up and up and up. Unavoidable. But there it is. So we've heard from Mr. Elliott that the wording here is broad enough that he can come back with, should you wish, as part of a broader context of miss comprehensive review, sorry, comprehensive zoning by law review. So I think at this point, we've discussed this pretty deep to death. Counsel? All in favor for the motion as it stands? Thank you. That carries. Madam Clerk. Mr. Elliott, thank you for your input. It's really shed a lot of light on this for, I think, most of us. Next item is a motion by councillor McGinn. I'll read the motion for the folks in the audience. That council allow property owners to on properties they own. A join the corporation, the town of Midland of the B City Canada program pilot or trial and that they may also choose to renaturalize the property as they choose and they will advise the corporation, the town of Midland of this action. Can I have somebody, is there anybody wishes to second that motion? I see councillor Gordon. Thank you, councillor Gordon. I'll answer your question, sorry. Councillor McGinn, I almost did it again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this comes from a previous council meeting where we agreed that as a town and as a municipality that we were going to participate in the B City Canada program and had a couple of residents that reached out and said that they would love to be able to do this on their own property. They would love to be able to participate. They want to be able to help. They want to, they want to be supporting this. Personally, I have to share that I'm, you know, I'm a little biased because I like bees and I was a beekeeper. So but I'm not talking about, you know, people having beehives in their yards because there's, there's rules about that. It's, that's not what this is about. It's about renaturalizing. It's about, it's about, you know, having a pollinator friendly space, a pollinator friendly garden. Sometimes they don't look like your typical. When you're renaturalizing and you're using indigenous species for the mason bees that are here, sometimes it doesn't look like the quintessential white picket fence with all the same colored flowers around it, but it's beautiful. It can look that way, but it doesn't have to. So there's a lot of people that are reaching out and have said, they really want to be a part of this. And they really want to. They want to be able, they, they want to, there's a lot of people that don't like grass. That's, that's another part of it. There's a lot of people that just don't like the green grass. They don't want to be cutting the green grass. They want to be able to be renaturalizing and having some beautiful flowers and, and spaces that are better, better for the biodiversity of our, of our town. Instead of green grass.
Thank you, councillor. I have deputy mayor Ross, councillor Shesky after that, then councillor Gordon.
Thank you. I just had a quick question and then a response, a follow up, I presume. I know councillor McGinn's our representative with the Severn Sound. Could you update us on what the intention of Severn Sound, is this something that they were looking to do, bring in to the households or was it just a trial for the parks?
I have to get back to you because we didn't have our meeting before this meeting. So if I'm going to answer intelligently that question, then I need to make sure that I'm asking Julie. And I have not heard back from Julie. But I can give you my overall sort of interpretation is that is that it's something that is supported. It is something that is supported by the SSE. That there's a wealth of resources there for people who are wanting to reach out and get the literature and gain the information about how to do everything from like xenosphereing, xenoscaping to what is noxious, what is is on the list of, of oh councillor May, why am I dropping words? Invasive species, invasive species plants. Thank you very much. So that is, that's an area that they, they definitely help in. And when it comes to B, B City, Canada, these are not going to be invasive. They're going to be coming back to what is natural for our region. So yes, they're very supportive of it. And anybody who wants to reach out and get the information, it's easy to do. I can, deputy mayor, if you would allow, I can send the email and then I can answer you directly. And we could maybe bring it up at a other time, but I don't want to speak on behalf of, without asking that direct question.
No problem. That's fine. I, I was just surprised if, if this indeed what they wanted. Where they come in not only from our parks, but into our household, it would have been included into recommendation. But if you could get back to me, that'd be fantastic. With that said, I am not going to support that this at this time. I'm fine with having a trial at a few of our parks. I know there was five locations that were identified. And I think a trial or a pilot program was, is, is great with me in those parks. And I'm going to play it to see how that year goes for the next year. And if it indeed is going well and SSE says we should expand into our residential community, then I will support it at that time. But as of today, I'm just going to not vote in favor of this and allow us to have the trial in our parks at this time.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor Shesky.
Thank you very much, your worship. Just to echo deputy mayor's comments. It was very clear in the report that this was a trial. We even rained back instead of doing it in all the parks, we're only going to do it a few parks just to get it, you know, a taste of the atmosphere and how the public perceives this. Councillor Gordon can attest to the backlash on social media about naturalizing areas and not cutting grass. And he's spoken to that at length. So I think instead of forcing people to live in a naturalized, a new naturalized world and if we allow this in neighborhoods, like people aren't going to be able to escape it. It's their next door neighbor. It's the yard right next to them. This is gives them the option to not go to a park. If you don't want to go to one of the bee friendly parks, then go to one of the ones that's green grass and cut every day. So I'm a huge pollinator supporter. I support bees. You know, I think it's a trial. If we trialed recycling cigarette butts to pave all our roads, we wouldn't encourage the residents to do their driveways until we knew that it worked well. So I think I would be irresponsible to just, you know, open up the floodgates to bee world. And I think it's a great trial and I think we're doing the right thing, but I think it's a little, a little soon to be opening the floodgates.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gordon?
Well, I feel pretty connected to this motion because it kind of evolved out of one of my objections to the, the last one. And really was my only reason why I was having a hard time or didn't support the bee program was because it wasn't allowing the community to, to participate with us. And I understood the rationale and still do that it's a pilot. We'll try and let the town get this right. And then invite the community to participate later. And I'm hoping that later isn't like two years. It was, you know, maybe after one year. We could publish, here's how you do it and here's how you don't do it list. And people can sign up to participate. Or maybe we let backyards do it, not front yards. There's got to be a compromised way to let people do this. So I totally understand the concept of let's try it first, work the kinks out of it, then invite the community. But because it was so foundational to me, like that's the reason why I couldn't support the last one. I'm, I am going to support this one because I, I appreciate councillor McGinn trying to find that happy medium and I'm sure she didn't bring this just because of me, but it's a big part of it. So I'm going to support her on it. And at least then we've had this discussion and there's clearly a willingness that there are people in the community who want to participate. And I would argue that if you were going to allow this to start off, it would probably be a good backyard experiment in residential rather than front yards to get started. You know, and to councillor Woszewski's point, I mean, I like a nice clean cut lawn at the front. I do it at the back too. But if the guy next door to me, you know, which he did actually two doors down, let it grow to like the point where you got to call out the hay baler. You know, not everyone in the neighborhood likes that. And I got all the doorknob complaints about it and by law took care of it. To their credit, they did a good job. But so I would like to see, I would like to see the public participating on this, you know, sooner than later. Doesn't have to be right out of the gate, but I'm going to vote for this anyway because I appreciate that it was brought forward tonight.
Hey councillor, councillor May.
Uh, thank you. Well, when we were discussing it last time, it kind of came back to where this is regulated and that's under the property standards by law. And we were talking about how we tried to update it last term. And so I guess that's the question for staff is property standards by law, I think that's the tool that we would amend and modernize to then allow for more xeriscaping, pollinators. And that I think is the tool that we need to kind of tweak with. So I'm wondering if we could hear from staff about if the property standards modernization is basically stalled out or is that something that perhaps we could talk about in the balance of this term? Thank you.
Anybody on staff wish to respond to councillor May? Around property standards by law and where it sits at the moment? Silence.
Yeah, through your worship. We're at a bit of a loss because that was a mom preach seat whose area and that we have a vacancy rate right now in that area that we're recruiting. So I think that issue will be on the top of the pile for, you know, the new executive director that comes in. I, I don't know that David Ori, because we haven't been involved in the property standards by law. And I don't believe Jim is on, on this call to be able to respond tonight to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I hand this over to you, deputy mayor, for a moment, please?
Yes, I have no problem. What do you have to offer?
Well, my understanding is that this is basically being, was rolled out as a trial and I have seen, I have seen people start to try and do this on their own. When I lived down south in Aurora and then in Newmarket, yes, sorry, Richmond Hill. And without understanding the implications of what they were doing, there were some really serious neighborhood conflicts developed around it. So the reason I supported the notion of doing this as a trial, particularly in our parks, is it gives people an opportunity to understand what renaturalization looks like. Both aesthetically and functionally from an ecological perspective in terms of their usage of a space versus not using a space. So to then just go and transpose this into the broader public raises a whole bunch of issues for me around enforcement. Property standards is councillor May spoke to. Just what can, what's acceptable and what isn't. And without the benefit of doing a broader trial for people to really see and decide whether or not they like this. I think would be premature. So while I don't, I think that it's great that people have the opportunity to participate, particularly in the pollinator piece of it. I think that it's, I think a bit premature at the moment. And so for myself, I can't, I can't support this momentarily, but I would say, don't lose that thought. Because as we come out of this and we, we start to be able to develop some guidelines, so we don't have Donny Brooks in every, every residential street. So for myself, I can't see my supporting this at the moment. For those reasons. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? Councillor McGinn, I see your hand up.
I promise I will bring this back again and again. And that I will, I will answer your question, deputy mayor and work a little bit harder to refine the language and refine the education piece that needs to be put into place. So thank you very much, everybody, for all of your comments.
And if I'm hearing correctly, it's not that we're saying no to the idea. We're just saying no to it at this point. So please do bring it back and in a year from now, if it works out well in our parks or a couple of years from now, it may be something that we all want to consider. So I appreciate you bringing it forward. I don't, we haven't voted yet, but it does get defeated, please, you know, there's opportunity to bring it back in the future. I'll turn it back over to you, your worship.
Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? One, two, three, four, against? One, two, three, four, against? That that does not carry. Motion is defeated. So last item under notice is a motion. Speaking of natural, I like to know who left the fly in here. It's just driving me nuts at the moment.
I have one at my place, too. What the heck?
I don't know. It's an invasion. So I have a motion here by moved by Counselor Gordon, and I'll read it again for the public. The staff report on options to fully open Little Lake Park for drive-through traffic this winter. Plan for holiday Christmas lights to be installed throughout the park's walking trail. A fester tree installed on rotary stage, and that outdoor winter recreational activities like outdoor ice surface and or skate trail festival or marketplace and other attractions that our event staff deem reasonable be explored to provide residents and visitors with pandemic-friendly recreational options while using this asset. Do I have a second for that, please? Counselor McGinn, thank you. Comments or questions from counsel? Oh, sorry. Counselor Gordon, first, your motivation behind this. I'm sorry, I've been doing this all week.
All right. It's all good. So first of all, the the things that I put in that motion, they're not like finite things that they were telling staff how they have to do. It was inspiration because we have creative event staff that are, you know, underutilized right now, and I really wanna get their creative juices going again. So last year, just a sec, I wrote some words down. I have a tendency to do this for some things, just so I don't miss stuff. But somebody took issue that I was not looking at the camera, or I was reading from a screen or something. So I'm gonna just tell you right now, I'm gonna read from my notes on my screen. I can't see it right now. I got my word over top of you. Last year, we heard a passionate deputation from a longtime resident. The late, the late and greatly respected Mr. Drummond Pete, who suggested that a Christmas light display in Little Lake Park be installed, and it would bring joy and peace and happiness to the residents and visitors alike, as they can enjoy that peaceful solitude of the gently lit park on cold winter's nights leading up to and through our festive season. His ask was simple, and I believe it can be easily achieved with some creativity and some collaboration and community engagement, all things Midland is really, really good at. After his deputation, I committed to moving this forward, and I believe that now is the opportune time, more than ever. I believe the cost can be minimal, and with the participation of our businesses and community members through sponsorships, in effect, the town provides access hydro to the tree, if we will, and we let the community sponsors make the magic happen, even if it's just decorating the trunks, because we got some big trees in Little Lake Park. To the CAO's point this evening, he coined the term, or at least I believe he did, a reverse parade. You know, it's something that's COVID-friendly, safe for all to enjoy. There are other ideas that I'm certain our event staff can come up with, and this motion asks for them to put their creative hats on and come back with us next month with ideas on how this event can be safely and reasonably achieved for our community. As is usual for me, I went to the community for feedback, which, in this case, was absolutely incredible. The concept was shared hundreds and hundreds of times and reached over 40,000 people on Facebook alone. Arguably, that's more than all the residents of Midland. So this really picked up traction and kinda went viral. But it was, there's clearly an appetite for this, and I believe we can and we should consider this. With the expected cancellation of Halloween, or at least Halloween as we all know it, and then the very likely cancellation of the Santa Claus parade, our community really needs a safe and enjoyable way to enjoy this park and take in the serene beauty of Christmas or festive lights, whatever you wanna call them, along this path. So I'm asking for your support tonight, not to pull the trigger on this and the list of things I put in it, but to get this report from staff next month and review the feasible options that are gonna be found therein, and look at what we can implement this festive season. And subject to your questions, that's really my submission on this.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Deputy Mayor Ross, and then Counselor Cunningham, then Counselor Downer.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I'm gonna move, and I'm, this is no disrespect to the idea, nothing. I think it's fantastic, but I'm gonna move to defer this for three weeks if I could. And the reason for it is I've reached, I have reached out to one of our community groups. And unfortunately, we were unable to get back to me before this meeting. I was hoping I would have some news and that they could be involved, but I haven't been able to hear back from them. The initial conversation, they were very interested in being involved and and not sure if they would even consider taking over, but run the operations, not only for the town, but to fundraiser for themselves. So if you if we could, we could allow staff to have a look into it, reach. And in the meantime, I could do a little behind the scenes and hear back from that volunteer group, sorry, the community group, and we could just make a final decision with regards to that on the our next meeting, which I believe, I'm just checking my calendar, which is October 7. But if we can obviously go forward, but I think would be ideal to defer and come back for a wholesome conversation. Staff is able to come back with a report, and maybe we could get some wonderful answer from this community group.
Oh, I have, then I motion to defer by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second for that? Counselor Downer, seconds? Counselor Gordon?
Yeah, I have no problem with the deferral. I mean, I don't always take exception to every deferral. If this is a deferral that's gonna, as you suggest, potentially put the lion's share, perhaps I'm using a puny word there, in the hands of a group that could, you know, do a lot of the heavy lifting and pull this off, and all we have to do is plow the road and provide some hydro, then, I mean, that's amazing. And that doesn't tax staff with a lot of time to do, and they can do other stuff. Hopefully, they're doing other things. But I would be fine with this deferral if if it's not just for a delay, and truly, we were ready to make some kind of commitment to this because time creeps up very quickly on us to make this happen for when the first snowfall happens. We don't wanna be digging through mountains of snow to run electrical cables. So however, I would be okay with the deferral, just so you know, if we came back at the next meeting.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Just to follow up, if I could, yeah, I think it's worthwhile to at least have a conversation. They may come back and say, no, we have no interest. We don't have any members that wanna do it. But I think in order to make this complete as most successful as possible, and I think it's a great idea. I'm a Drummond Pete fan and a longtime friend of my father's. And if we could do this in honor of him, I I'm behind 100%, but I think it would be worthwhile to have that quick conversation. Unfortunately, I didn't get back with the long weekend. I tried to get in touch, and it just sort of fell through the cracks. I contacted him yesterday morning, and they were going to send out an email to their members, and I had, I called them before the meeting, hoping I'd have some news. Unfortunately, I didn't have any. So if we it'd be worth it for two weeks, but if we wanna move forward, that's fine, too. But I think it would be worthwhile to hear back from that group.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor McGinn, you wish to speak to the deferral? Please?
Yes. To speak to the the deferral, one concern that I would have is that if we were to on the basis, on its face value, I I am understanding it, and I agree with it if it's the wise way to move forward with this. I have one concern, and that is that if we come back in October, and, you know, we revisit this as it as it is, I would like to hear from Mr. Campbell if that is enough time, because sometimes we have snow by the end of October. Is that enough time? Does he have enough time? Because that is actually a snow dump at the top. Is there, I know it will be on the forefront of people's minds that you know, that snow dump will have to go somewhere else.
Mr. Campbell?
Through your worship to Counselor McGinn and members of council. There's a couple issues with this, and really, they're from the engineering operation side. It's on the opening the road, it's how do we make it safe? We have to take out speed bumps because our snowplows will get wrecked hitting the speed bumps. We have to grind out all of the speed bumps that are in the park. But we can do that in a relatively short, short notice of council wishes. And then with that road safety, the reason it has been closed over the years is because of the hill going down from Young Street and accidents that happened in the past. And the wish of, it predates me whether it was council or staff around using salt to keep the pavement bare, and we'd be using more salt right next to Little Lake Park. So the road has been closed for safety issues over the years. Council wishes to open it. We can do that, and we can maintain it. That's an easy thing to do. I think the bigger challenge is there's a limited number of electrical outlets in the park, and certainly where there are electrical outlets to put lights up. And if there's charity group that wishes to donate lights and install them, I think that's a wonderful opportunity. If we have to go and, you know, get electrical engineer in to redesign our electricity network in there, you know, that won't happen this year. But I think there's an opportunity here. But if it's just doing some simple things for this year, I don't believe the deferral would keep us from doing something.
Thank you kindly. Thank you for being so positive in your answer as well and as honest. Thank you.
Counselor May?
Thank you. That was great to hear from Mr. Campbell regarding, you know, feasibility of this. I I think, I love the ideas. I said last year, I definitely support it. I spoke to Mr. Pete on the phone about it. I just think we have to kind of be realistic about how we're gonna ramp this up and roll this out, because basically what we're proposing is Midlands Festival of Lights. However you want to portray it, if it's celebrating, you know, Diwali, or Hanukkah, or Christmas, or Canadian holidays, whatever it may be, we're gonna have to ramp up. And if you see the other municipalities that have invested heavily, I think just a quick Google search of Niagara Falls, and it looks like they spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. It looks like it in the order of close to half a million dollars, and this was a few years ago. So we gotta start small and scale it up. And I know there's interest of doing lights in the town, especially Little Lake Park. So the onus will be on us, though, in the next free week, if there's deferral, to do the community organizing and kinda connecting the pieces and connecting the dots. Because I was certainly, I'll tell you, certainly, the BIA is very interested in doing seasonal lights, doing Christmas stuff, Christmas markets, and that's maybe the place where some of those economic, you know, sales mini events could be hosted. I know the BIA certainly has funds that they'd love to contribute. So getting some of the community groups on board, we just kinda have to connect the dots and to soften the blow for staff. And the other thing is, it takes almost six months minimum to plan kind of these large-scale events. So we're a little late in the game to do a large-scale event, but we certainly can do a bunch of small-scale events. You know, simple things like encouraging people to put lights on their, you know, houses, getting businesses downtown to put lights on, and and just kind of build the momentum. There's momentum here, and we wanna tap into it. There's enthusiasm, there's positivity, and it's great. So that's just kind of some of the comments I'd make, is even if we defer this, the onus is on us, counselors, to kinda try to connect as many pieces as we can and and build upon this idea. So that was the one comment that even if we defer it, we can still, you know, connect the dots, if you will. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. So just a reminder that this is around the motion to defer. We're not actually speaking to the content of the motion itself, or the how we feel about the the content and how we might proceed. I have Counselor Shewski, you wish to speak to the deferral?
Yes, please. Thank you very much. So in terms of the deferral, I I don't think it's gonna impact the Festival of Lights so much as it is the opening of Little Lake, because if that is reasonable for this year, I don't think we should defer this personally. We should give staff as much time as we can to take a good look at it and get back with an answer on what is feasible for this year. In terms of just opening Little Lake Park, we've talked about it, the five years in a row being on council, why haven't we done it? And we've kinda kicked it around, but we've never pulled the trigger. So I commend Counselor Gordon for bringing this forward. This motion, we wouldn't be having this conversation. So I think if we are open and adamant about opening this up, I hate to complicate the last motion of the night, but I would love to see this split, so that one motion is that we open Little Lake Park, or we talk about the feasibility of opening up Little Lake Park, and then we defer the Festival of Lights conversation, pending conversations with service groups, pending conversations with their special event staff. But I do think we should give staff as much time as possible to start looking at Little Lake now, and what is it gonna take to open it? Perhaps Tony's Fries wants to stay open, or Tony's, Tony's Restaurant wants to stay open for the winter, and we should give him as much notice as possible, too. Maybe he wants to be open to snowmobile traffic this year, and it could have an impact on his business as well. So I think it's the best thing for us to do, not to defer the entire motion, but to split it. I have no idea what that looks like, but I'm gonna make that recommendation. So thank you.
Just before I recognize Counselor Gordon, Madam Clerk, does a motion to defer take precedence over a motion to split the motion?
Yes, that is the motion that's on the table at this moment.
Thank you. Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. Okay, so from what I'm hearing now, these efforts that we're talking about, about talking to the the community groups and everything, that can all be in tandem and happen concurrently. We don't need to induce any delay in this at all for that to happen. It's not like it's staff or it's these groups. It's a collaborative effort. I'm willing to, you know, reach out to people, whatever I need to do. So I would like to see us not defer this now. Let's leave it intact. Let's just approve it. And let's work collaboratively to try and find things that'll offload as much of this from being town responsibility as possible. Clearly, we're gonna have to do the the responsibility of pulling up these speed bumps and whatever, that's us. But I think we could probably put, assuming there's will to do this thing at all, we could put that through tonight, the turn the egg timer over, you know, and we all get to work on it. It's not something that we're gonna gain anything by pushing off for a couple weeks.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you, Your Worship. I agree. Our staff is certainly capable of working with the community groups alongside a deputy mayor as we move this forward, if we do tonight. Also, wondering along the lines of, we don't really know what our incredible event staff have been working on, because we know from our previous CAO's report that we are looking to accommodate events and that our staff are working madly on ways to be creative within our budget, within our realm, to make sure that we can have some things happening. So it'd be really nice to know what they're working on, make sure this is not going to conflict with some of the plans that are already underway that manpower has been put into. And to Counselor Mayne's point, maybe broaden that report back to to the entire Christmas of downtown, small events that could coordinate with this. I don't think that that this motion necessarily precludes that unless I'm reading it wrong.
Yeah, Counselor. Just so that everybody's aware, Environment Canada and National Atmospheric Administration are calling for a warm fall, a late start to winter because of La Niña. I personally hope they're right. On the other hand, it's kinda nice to see the snow falling over the lake. So I'm kinda split on that one, but I don't think it's necessarily a concern. I I would suggest to you that staff are gonna work on this anyway. But I think they can come back, and we can make a more informed and reasoned decision if if we allow them the time. So I'm gonna call the question on the motion to defer. All those in favor?
Your Worship?
Yes?
Did you want me, so motion to defer, so if until the October 7th council meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so just that the motion be deferred to allow consultation and the investigation of opportunities, but the report to be brought back to the October 7th, 2020 council meeting for consideration. Is that correct? Is that, or?
Deputy Mayor?
Sounds great to me.
Was that everyone's, was that everyone's understanding, or was it just to come back with same motion on October 7?
Well, I think with a report and a motion.
Okay, okay. So that's the motion.
Thank you. So I'm gonna call the question then. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. So we have a deferral until the 7th. I'm really looking forward to this conversation, because I think there's a lot of great ideas here. And I think the notion of broadening it to the broader community and engaging some of the folks who've in the past, as I said to Mr. Pete when he made his presentation, I can remember standing at the top of Young Street in the past, as I said to Mr. Pete when he made his presentation, I can remember standing at the top of Young Street, looking down the hill in a snowscape in which the whole downtown was a string of fairy lights and Christmas lights. Crossed was the Simcoe elevator, beautiful great Christmas tree on the top of it, reflected in the, in the lake because it hadn't frozen over yet. And just add to the whole thing, as you walk downtown, there were Christmas carolers in, you know, late 1800 attire, going into the various businesses and, and on the streets singing carols. It was really quite magical. So I'm looking forward to this. So we have a deferral. Be a good conversation next to the 7th. Thank you to all of you. I now have a motion moved by counselor, or just certain deputy mayor Ross. You've got me doing it now, deputy mayor. Seconded by counselor McGinn, that bylaw 2020 dash four and nine being a bylaw to adopt the proceeding to the regular council meeting with closed session held September 16th, 2020, be passed and enacted. Comments, questions from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. And finally, moved by counselor Cunningham, seconded by deputy mayor Ross, that this regular meeting of council with closed session adjourned at 10:32. All in favor? I don't see a no anywhere. That's carried. Have a wonderful evening. Be well. Stay safe. Thanks for a great conversation. See you on the 7th.